You guys could teach a class in the Makerspace.
Council Brown could.
I don't know about that.
I yell at students.
Well, good to know.
Sounds like a person who spent their career in higher education.
All right, it's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started this evening. I want to welcome everybody and thank you for joining us tonight for a special meeting of City Council for September 28. I am Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and because of COVID-19, this meeting is being held electronically, as you're aware of, and is being recorded. If you'd like to request permission to speak during our public comment periods, please raise your hand, and you'll find the raise hand button at the bottom of your panel. Attendees calling in can dial star nine on their phone, and a raised hand will appear on your behalf when I acknowledge you, and the city clerk is able to unmute you. Please tell us your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you'd like to speak on another topic, you'll just raise your hand when that new topic comes up. Thank you so much for helping us follow these directions to maintain meeting decorum, and I'll ask the city clerk for a roll call.
Councilmember Lipton. Councilmember Lay. Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Here.
Mayor Stolzmann.
Here. Thank you, everyone. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Great, there's a motion and second any discussion of the consent agenda. All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, the consent agenda passes, and that brings us to discussion direction of the city manager's proposed budget. This, you know, we have talked about this a few times so far, and so we're going to focus on changes made, and any new information or discussion, so the title of this topic is Discussion on Proposed Budget Changes Made Since September 14 Special Meeting, and ARPA Funding Information. And I'll turn it over to our city manager, Megan Davis, for any info she'd like to provide us for tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, it's nice to see everyone. So, as the mayor mentioned, this is one of several discussions that we've had, so we're really here to kind of follow up on some of the recommended changes that were provided by City Council during our last discussion, and also to provide a little bit more information at the request of City Council for a follow-up discussion. So, I will turn it over to Director Watson, and he can give an overview of the changes that we have made, and also, we have some additional information about the American Recovery or the American Rescue Plan Act funding, and some potential questions for discussion in that area. And then, after we complete this kind of first section of the budget discussions, the museum discussion. So, I'll turn it over to Director Watson.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Can you, you okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'll just give a quick review of the changes we've made since the last meeting on September 14. We made, we've updated a lot of the revenue projections based upon the latest trend analysis that we've done, and we've presented to the Finance Committee. All these adjustments were relatively minor, there are some changes, but nothing was, none of the revenue categories were lowered, and all the projections that were adjusted up, it was a relatively minor adjustment. We've added a one-time $3 million transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund in 2022 to help fund the restoration of the $1.5 million a year to the pavement booster program. As you recall, we originally presented a reduction in the pavement booster program. And then, the council requested, we put $1.5 million per year back in that program. And so, we've added a one-time transfer in 2022 from the General Fund to the Capital Projects. We've also added a one-time transfer from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund to the General Fund in the amount of $5.2 million. So, this transfer anticipates that there'll be at least $5.2 million of accumulated general fund expenditures that are eligible for reimbursement from the ARPA funds by the end of 2022. Finally, we've reduced the amount of budgeted expenditures in the Recreation Center Construction Fund based upon the latest project list. The last time we met, we had $125,000 budgeted as additional expenditures coming out of the construction fund. We've lowered that now to $93,500. We've also removed the transfer of the remaining funds from that construction fund to the Recreation Center Debt Service Fund. So, any excess funds remaining in the construction fund, we're planning on just keeping those there, and they will be available for future capital projects. So, those are the four main adjustments that we've made since the last time we've met. There are two more adjustments that have occurred after your packet was published, that you're going to see at our next meeting or at the public hearing, so I thought I'd just mention these briefly today. Yesterday, the Finance Committee recommended that we maintain the current 2.75 mil levy for the Recreation Center bonds. The proposal that in front of you tonight, and the long-term financial plan in your packet include a reduction of the 2021 levy to two, yeah, the 2021 levy to 2.25 mils, and then a gradual reduction in that levy over the long term as assessed valuation increases. So, under the recommendation from the Finance Committee, we're just going to have a flat 2.75 mils will be maintained and will result in a buildup of a restricted reserve that will be used to begin making early redemptions or advance calls on the bonds beginning in 2026. And finally, we have added $80,000 to the Comprehensive Plan Review Budget for an Affordable Housing Study. This was based on some recent council direction to the Planning Department. So, we have those two, excuse me, additions that we're going to go ahead and make, and those will be within your next packet or at the public hearing. That pretty much completes my prepared remarks. I'm happy to try and answer any questions or address any of the other information that's within the packet.
Thank you very much, Director Watson, and thank you, the city manager, for making the changes for our council discussion at the previous meetings. Let us take us to public comment on this section of the meeting. If any members of the public would care to come up, please raise your hand at this time. And again, you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to, but if you're start off by please telling us your name and address, that would be really helpful for the record. First up, we have Maggie Harper.
Hello, can you hear me, City Council?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. I'm Maggie Harper, I live at 1157 Harper Lake Drive, and I was on a couple weeks ago, and first want to thank the city for, it looks like you've started doing a little bit of weed pulling and trimming trees along Washington, as well as you opened up a hole for the valve box. The, the city has not addressed the dead grass, stressed trees due to no water, which the situation is actually getting worse. The dead and dying shrubs, which have not been pruned for at least this year, maybe a couple of years weeds between the sidewalks and fences. The exposed rusting metal landscape edging around their trees with sharp corners, weeds in their grass, nor the replacement of vegetation that they have removed as it has died. So, allowing these beauty bands to die back and go into disrepair negatively affects our area in Ward 2, and it also negatively affects our home prices, which isn't good for the residents, and it isn't good for the city as well. So, after having many discussions with people in the Grove at Harper Lake HOA, as well as Summit, as well as Saddleback, it would seem that in this area, what we are asking the city to do is to fulfill its responsibility, not only to provide the short-term fixes, which we are seeing you're starting to do, but to have it in your plans to maintain and upgrade with appropriate vegetation in the long-term plan in Ward 2. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Larry Donner.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, can you still hear me?
Yes, I still can.
Alrighty, there we go. My name is Larry Donner, I live at 1020 Willow Place, Lewisville, Colorado. I would like to thank the city for hiring contractors to begin tree work on the south side of Washington Avenue between McCaslin and Tyler. I'd like to inquire if this work is going to continue on the north side of the street. Crew members said they were only contracted to trim and prune trees on the south side. I would encourage City Council, I would encourage the city to keep moving to rehabilitate our streetscapes and parks after years of neglect. We need more than plans, we need work on the ground. Past plans, like the 2017 median landscape renovation plan, the 2019 subdivision entry landscape improvements plan, the 2020 plan to replace failing retaining walls, and most recently, the plan to develop a plan for Cottonwood Park of languished due to inaction. Rhetoric and plans are like the fertilizer our turf so desperately needs. But action is far better. Money's appropriated, but nothing gets delivered in far too many cases. I urge the city to plan to work rather than work to plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the, the section of the meeting tonight? All right, seeing none, back over to council questions and comments. Any council discussion, Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I think, I think we'd be remiss not to have a conversation about the, the maintenance of public spaces, and see if there are some budget consequences to where we are now and where we need to be. And I'm going through the budget, I've been going through the budget, it doesn't look like there's any really real increased spending in those maintenance categories. In fact, there are some decreases. And I'm wondering, and I'm just wondering out loud a bit, whether or not, you know, to catch up, whether or not we need some sort of booster program in place, starting, you know, actually starting right away, but certainly over the next one to two years to get us to the point where this can become maintainable again. And there are a number of capital projects that haven't gotten done related to streetscapes and irrigation systems, and, you know, so and so forth. And, you know, it certainly impacts Ward 2, I think it goes beyond Ward 2, and there are other areas of the city that also needs attention. So, I, I don't know yet, and I hope to hear tonight, whether these are budgetary issues alone, or if they're process issues and other issues that, you know, need to be addressed in order for us to get to the point where, or to the place we want to be with this. And I'd like to have some discussion tonight before we just go through, you know, take a pass on the budget, because I think it could have some budgetary impacts, and like to hear from the rest of you.
Well, so.
And I would like to hear from Megan.
That's exactly what I was going to say. So, before we all just pile on, let's, let's give the city manager a chance to tell us what the current plan is. City Manager Davis?
Hi, thank you, yes. I'm happy to provide a little bit more information about kind of the discussions we've been having, and what we're looking at in terms of next steps, and then we can talk more about if you have some other ideas about the, the planning around that and the budgeting around that. So, you know, right now, we're really taking a close look at our operations and maintenance, and how we're kind of planning for that to be ongoing in a sustainable manner, and really looking at all of our parks, assets, and how we approach our operations and maintenance. And so, we're looking at options for getting some assistance to help us really formalize those plans, knowing that there have been some changes in management approaches, and some policy changes around how we can manage things, as well as impacts from staffing needs. And I think that information will really help us understand when things like this occur, so things like, you know, fluctuations in staffing that we have, are having a hard time manage, how we can be responsive and still be able to maintain our base level of operations on an ongoing basis. And if we can't, how we know what those changes will look like, and what impacts they'll have on our levels of service, and how we can communicate that to the public and council so that you can understand, you know, what that means. So, that's kind of what we're working on right now, is getting our arms around that and getting that type of operations and maintenance plan in place. And I do know that that will certainly drive some ongoing and emerging needs for sustainable investments to ensure that we can continue those operations in a sustainable manner. So, that could be things like, you know, sort of a strategic investment, investments in our irrigation system, investments in vegetation management on a sort of cyclical basis to, to both maintain and then upgrade in certain areas. So, I think it'll give us kind of a, a better baseline to be able to be able to kind of move some, some of those things forward in a, in a strategic manner. So, I think I do foresee that we will have some budget needs around that. I don't, I can't tell you right now exactly what they are, except that I think that undertaking some of this planning is going to require some assistance. And so, as we work on looking at, you know, potential partners to do that, potential vendors we can work with, we're working on a scope or work right now, you know, we may be coming back for a budget amendment for some funding to do that. And then, I think we will be able to come back with you with a little bit more detail around exactly, you know, what sort of those next steps and, and some key investments to support those next steps would be. So, I know we talked at the last meeting about different ways to handle that. We can come back to you, and we can make a budget amendment either in 2021 and in 2022, or I should say both in 2021 and 2022, or as we look to 2022, you can think about, you know, if you want to start to set aside funds or do placeholder or something like that. I would just, I don't know if Director Mosley has anything to add to that in terms of what our current approach is.
Director Mosley?
Based on the conversations that you and I have had, Megan, I think that you explained it really well. I think, you know, right now, I've been doing some research and getting information from other agencies on agents, organizations that they've worked with in order to put in place a comprehensive management plan and operational plan. So, we're looking at that information and putting together a scope, as well as a draft of an RFP to put out to help us through that process to ensure that we can meet the base level services, and then also understand potentially the gap between the base level services that we are able to provide and the enhanced services that the community might expect. So, that way, we can bring back budget amendments to fill that gap, whether it's with contractual work, or whether it's additional full-time employees, or some other way to meet those needs going forward.
Thanks, Director Mosley. So, so far, just to recap the previous meetings of council, the council direction, which was unanimous, and we, we all collectively agreed is that the level of service isn't acceptable. We're hoping staff comes back with addressing capital replacement and operations on an ongoing basis, and the council was supportive of booster programs if needed. And so, that's, I believe, where we've put it, and the council's been unanimous behind that. And I think there's an expectation that that will take additional resources, Councilmember Lipton. And so, in the discussion tonight, I mean, whether we put a placeholder in, and then just require that before any of that can be expended, they have to come back to council, that's fine. Or if we all just know that there's not this big balance sitting out there, that we have these unmet needs that we've not budgeted for. I mean, I think all their strategies, we just need it to be clear that everybody's on the same page, and we all know where we're going. Councilmember Lipton, do you want to kind of frame how you want the discussion to go on this topic from here?
No, I think, I think you and I are on the same page on this. I mean, I, I think, you know, we, we will need more money. I mean, there's no question about it, and I think it would be prudent to allocate some money now. You know, like I said, analogous to the to the asphalt paver boosters program we put in place, what, nine years ago? And doesn't mean we have to decide what projects get done tonight, or what the changes would be, but it would be nice to at least have some money set aside for this purpose. And then, you know, the staff and future council can, can program it later. I mean, I think, I think we want to send a very strong signal to the community that we have heard them, and that we are reacting in a way that's, that recognizes the fiscal imperative to, you know, where we eventually need to go with this. So, I, I would, I would be in favor of having a, a good placeholder for this purpose. And it goes beyond just parks and streetscapes. I mean, open space is another example. I mean, some, some of this is just integrated anyway. I'd point out, just as another example, we had a project in, I think it was open space for retaining wall replacement for $100,000. Well, obviously, $100,000 is, it's not going to pay for what we first envisioned two or three years ago. I mean, I mean, we have just inflationary increases that are baked into our numbers today that aren't recognized in the budget. So, I, I would like us to be fairly aggressive and, 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 you know, set aside some money now and not just do budget revisions later, although it will be a combination of the two. And I would also say that I'm all, I'm all in favor for, you know, doing this right, and putting some study and getting some help in terms of our processes and methods, but I also don't want to wait for another year while we study this to death. We need, I mean, some of this is pretty actionable now, you got to trim trees, you got to cut grass, you got to fix water line. There are things you know you have to do, and we don't need to study that to death. We just need to muster the resources either through the city staff or through contractors and get after the work. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Lipton, I just don't want there to be too much back and forth. So, I wonder if you could put out what you're proposing on an order of magnitude, knowing like we're talking about sprinkler replacement, which we know is about, you know, 500,000 for the lines that we've done recently, and we're just talking about maintenance of things that we already own. We're not talking about new programming. And so, I just wonder what kind of magnitude you're talking about for the placeholder?
Well, I think, I think order of magnitude, just for the maintenance, is probably 250,000 per year. And then, thinking about a capital item that, you know, would give us anywhere between a half million and a million to go after the aged assets that need to be refurbished and, and installed. So, you know, I'm thinking of something between probably a half million and a million dollars.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. Next in the queue, we have Councilmember Lay.
Thanks. And Councilmember Lipton, thank you for teeing this up in the way that you did. I guess a couple of points. One, thank you to Ms. Harper and Mr. Donner both, because I know that we've received a lot of, all of us have received and heard the comments that you and others who've been in touch with you and, and have provided additional information about the problems, the specificity of them, and so forth, have been very helpful. And I want to, I, I just want to thank you for the, the, the work that you've done. I think, second, I was, I'm pleased to hear what staff is doing right now. It's nice to hear all of the efforts that are going into trying to get both the plan together and the budget amendment to us. I agree with Councilmember Lipton's suggestion about the numbers. I almost wonder whether that's enough, but I'm certainly supportive of that. And I actually, Councilmember Lipton has plenty of experience to know what I think a good start is on that. I, I think the one thing that I would ask maybe more directly is, you know, there's some, there are definitely things that we can do longer term, even in the near, not the near term, but the medium term, six or eight months. It would be nice to continue the level of effort right now to attack the, the short-term projects that I think, there's things that would make the city look an awful lot better, things we know we need to do right now. And anything that you need from us immediately in the way of authorized funds or whatnot, I, I think we're all behind that. So, I just want to emphasize the near term, because I think it makes a difference, just as Mr. Donner talked about. I don't think he got an answer to his question just yet. I hope he will be getting an answer to his question about the care of the trees on the north side of Tyler. But I also think that we can do, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit, so to speak, and we ought to attack that as quickly as possible while the weather is good. Thanks.
City Manager Davis, I don't know if you wanted to respond to Councilmember Lay, just is there any confusion on your part as to the level of support of council on this?
No, I, I really appreciate the thoughts about the, both the short and long-term needs, and also the, you know, the expediency, the desires around the expediency. And I think we're, we've really been discussing getting this done as quickly as we can, and getting kind of understanding that kind of operations and maintenance plan as quickly as we can. And again, we, I think we can do that. And in the meantime, I think if there are things that we need, we will certainly come back. Like I said, I think we know we'll need a budget amendment around doing some of this work. And so, we can come, come back as we kind of scope that out and ask you in, in 2021, and, you know, what we might need in the, in the coming months.
Thanks, City Manager Davis. Next up in the queue is Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank my colleagues for their previous comments. I kind of outlined it in a little broader way. And you know me, I'm always looking for how we're going to fund, what we're going to spend. So, I'm going to try to roll all of this together and give you, give you my perspective. One of the topics and, and so, I was talking about the ARPA funding information. And, and, you know, one of the things that we give direction on, which is in the staff report, is, is really targeted transformation investments. And so, I think that we have $5.2 million there. We also have general fund reserves that are in excess of our targets, or even in what is being discussed in the Finance Committee, revised targets. But I want to broaden this a little bit, because I think there's, there's more categories that we need to be considering. And I'm not downplaying the comments that are made, I'm going to build on those comments. So, before us, we have a ballot issue in November about the transportation with the underpasses. There's the opportunity to buy down some of that. Within open space, we have trail and infrastructure maintenance that needs to be done. I was out on the open space trails today. And, you know, quite honestly, we're not keeping up with just some, some normal routine maintenance there. And I believe part of that is funding, and part of that is programmatic. Within the parks area, we had some comments from the citizens today talking about their particular areas. And I certainly agree with Councilwoman Lipton, it's not only in Ward 2, it's in the parks all over the city. And I know part of that has been issues about being able to hire staffing. There's been issues about getting responses to RFPs. But within parks, it's not only the parks, it includes the medians and the streetscapes. If you go look at the streetscapes at Cherry and McCaslin, they're basically dead. The next category I have is tree maintenance. And we know all over, whether it's on Washington or on Cherry or McCaslin, or where am I be? We're behind on that. And then, another, another thing that has been mentioned by staff a number of times is, you know, office space. And we need to be, as we've seen the number of staff increase, and, you know, I look at the numbers since I've been on council for six years, we've had at least a 20% increase in staffing. What that does is create a 20% greater need in office space. So, we need to be taking a look at that as well. So, those are five major categories when I think of investments we need to make. But I think there's immediate needs, it's been mentioned by, you know, Councilors Lay and Lipton. You know, certainly for the things that have been brought up by our, our neighbors up around Harper Lake and some of those areas, and certainly in all of the wards. But we have an immediate need in 2021 and 2022. So, the idea of setting aside some money with the idea it will be invested there makes perfect sense to me, so we could do. People say low-hanging fruit. I think that, well, there's better ways maybe of saying that, but I agree, there's some identified areas that we could address right away. But I also believe I'd like to see long-term planning. So, not only do I want to address the immediate need, so we can deal with things this year and next year, but I would expect that we get into planning for the budget for 2023. I want to see long-term planning for all of these categories, so we can understand and set priorities based upon what funding we do have available. And I do believe between the ARPA money and the general fund reserves that we can make great headway in, in a lot of these areas. And I'd like to see the worn-down trails and parks and open space, for example, they got extensive use because of COVID. the worn down trails and parks and open space, for example, they got extensive use because of COVID, those kind of things to be addressed. So I think there's a lot of things to talk about, but for today, I'd like to see us do something along the lines of what council Lipton has proposed. So we can start moving ahead. But I want to see a long-term plan for anything we do beyond twenty, starting in 2023. Thank you, mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Proton Maloney. Next in the queue, we have councilmember Brown.
Thank you, mayor. And thanks, councilmember Lipton, councilmember Maloney, councilmember Lay for addressing these things. I think, I think you've really hit the nail on the head. I, I want to make sure that, you know, this is a funding issue versus a programmatic issue. I, you know, I hate to say it, but there's too often that this council appropriates money. And the things don't get done for whatever reason. We have a turnback, we've talked about a turnback issue at the city before. So I want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're spending our money, but that, but that staff is prepared and ready to spend it. To make sure that we're, we're providing the level of service that people expect. I, I agree with councilmember Lipton and council and Mayor Proton Maloney in terms of the fact that this maintenance issue extends beyond Ward Two. You know, I think that Mayor Protem highlighted the issues on Cherry, which are very visible to folks who live down here in Ward Three. So I would, I would just encourage us to continue to, I would like to see staff regularly report to us on this particular topic. Yeah. And that, and that we make real progress on, you know, maintenance in these areas and regularly come back to the, to the council, either through the city managers' report or elsewhere to, to really, so that we can make sure that we as a council are holding our staff accountable for the commitments that they have made with the community. And that the community can know that, that, you know, we aren't just planning for planning sake and that we're actually taking action.
Thanks, councilmember Brown. Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you. Yes, mayor. I want to reiterate what everyone else has been saying. I think the, the concept that we need to take care of the low hanging fruit first is really important. It's, it might seem insignificant at, at some level, but it isn't. And then I, I would say there are some things that can continue to be done over the winter. I know that there's some people who think, you know, fall is coming and it's the end of taking care of things outside, but that's not actually accurate. Trees, for example, should be trimmed over the winter. And so that could be an ongoing thing all winter long. And if that becomes a priority, by the end of the winter, it'll be done. And I would not be opposed to doing Ward Two first, but I do agree that there are other wards that could use a little bit of trimming and weeding and things like that. I would like to know if we could hire contractors. I know we've hired a contractor to trim a tree in our yard and our neighbors have used them to trim their trees also. It was just done this morning. And so there are contractors out there and people willing to work and do this work. So we probably need to get going on it, but designating a certain amount of money and I'm, I'm willing to go with whatever councillor Lipton recommended on the amount annually. But I think that there needs to be, in addition to doing this budgeted repair work or maintenance now, we need to do, to have a, a long-term plan as we do for transportation for replacing the sprinkler systems and, and replacing trees because trees don't live forever. So figuring that, you know, an average tree lives for thirty years, this is how many we need to replace each year in order to keep up with the demand. I think having an ongoing maintenance schedule like that is really important. And I also would like to emphasize that we need to prioritize maintaining what we already have before we add more. So I don't want there to be more trees that need to be trimmed. So that's my comments and thank you.
Thanks, councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's pretty crystal clear to staff at this point that this is something that we want to see improvement on. And I, I trust that they will be working in that direction, whether it's sort of permission for, you know, revised budgets and spending that money and coming back and presenting that, or we set aside a dollar amount that they, they know will be okay with. I think it's sort of six of one, half dozen the other. So if, you know, if, if staff has a preference for which is clearer or easier or faster, I'm, I'm in support of that. I think, I think clearly we're, you know, the, the direction is clear. We want these things done. And then it's a matter of it getting done. And I do think that, you know, I, some of you may not know this, but I also, I own a handyman company and I can tell you that labor is incredibly hard to come by. As a property manager, maintenance landscaping people are incredibly hard to come by. And so there, there genuinely is a labor shortage. You can, you can offer what you want to offer. But it, it is difficult to hire in that industry right now. And so we just need to be careful. I mean, I think hiring for-profit businesses to do the work for us will be a faster, more expensive way to do it. But, and that may be what, what they need to, you know, lean on a little bit in this moment, but I just want to be careful that we don't say, hey, here's two hundred fifty thousand dollars, get it done. And then there still aren't people to hire. So they can, they can pay twice the normal rate, three times the normal rate and probably start getting people. But it's, I think there's still a challenge there that we need to just be aware of. I think it's important that we throw some money at it because it's not going to get solved without it. But understand there's, there are a lot of elements, a lot of elements to it. But I, anyways, I feel confident that staff knows what we're looking for. And I'm comfortable either way if, if, I don't know if we want to, mayor, if you want to propose which one you think is better, but I'm, I'm okay with either one.
So just hearing the conversation on this one, it sounds like the way to move forward with consensus as a body is to put in the placeholder that councilmember Lipton proposed in the CIP as a parks, open space and streetscapes booster program. But I, I want to make it clear to staff that the expectation is that that comes back to council before that money is expended so that everybody's on the same page as to what the program is and what it's going to. And then the other concern I would have about the placeholders, just that then people see that as a constraint or a map, a minimum or a maximum, and staff is working right now to determine what the costs are. So if the costs are way under that, then that's great. If they're way over than that, they need to tell us. So I just would say the placeholder is there to remind us that we don't really have these extra funds that people are looking at in the reserve because we already know we have a backlog. So that's why we're putting in this placeholder, but it shouldn't be misconstrued as a minimum or maximum or a free check to write without write appropriations without coming back to council. So just before I go back through folks that have re-raised their hand, I just want to see if city manager Davis understands that direction.
I do, and I appreciate the direction and the comments that were made. And I think, you know, just councilmember Dickinson echoed, you know, what I would have said as well is that we can look at contractors, but there's just, there's a shortage. It's a reality. It's what we're experiencing. So we will certainly try in the immediate term. And then just with regard to the placeholder mayor kind of echoing some of the points you made, just recognizing that as a placeholder, that means we don't have cost scoped yet, which means that, you know, we may come back and the costs may be much, much higher or they may be lower, but you know, so that that's an understanding right now that we, we don't know yet what they are. And then we'll have those discussions at that time to, you know, work with city council to determine how to move forward wherever we land on that. So appreciate it.
So I, thank you, city manager Davis. So we all have to agree that when it comes back, if it's a different number than the placeholder, no one will act surprised by that when that conversation comes forward. All right, back through the roll to see if there's any closing comments on this one. Councilmember Lipton.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I would not be shocked if it turned out to be more. I think if you look at two hundred fifty thousand dollars as the operating expense component, they'll probably buy you one full-time person per ward per year in additional landscape maintenance. And I, I think that, I, I don't think that comes close to what we need and, and to do catch up. Then you got the capital component. And I suggested, suggested starting at seven fifty, it wouldn't shock me based on what irrigation systems and whatnot cost today. It's going to be significantly more than that. But I don't want to lose factor that there's an operating expense component that, you know, relates to staff and equipment and things like that and cap, a capital component where you pay for projects and, you know, the, the big ticket stuff. And I think, you know, my experience is if you lose focus as a staff and you have to have good staff with good focus, then you're not going to win the battle in the long term, just throwing money into capital. You need people that are committed to making the place look great and get up every day and get excited about doing that. And they should be part of us. I mean, part, part of the city staff and not just overly relying on contractors who should be filling in gaps, but not doing the basic day-to-day stuff. On a recruiting basis, I think perhaps what we've done is, and I'm, this is, I guess, a little bit of speculation, but I would offer to staff is maybe we have over-relied on seasonal employees and, and, and maybe would give us a recruiting advantage if we've looked at full-time people, we offer benefits and we do things that these people couldn't get out in other organizations or on a seasonal basis. But have them working twelve months a year that like we were talking about, there's stuff to do twelve months a year. It's not just cutting the grass and, you know, from May to September. So I would just offer that. And like I said, wouldn't surprise me if it turns out to be more. But I appreciate the commitment the city manager has made and look forward to seeing some, some dramatic improvement. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember Lipton. And just a reminder to everybody tuned in at home that we did get a presentation and info in our packet from the park, park track and open space director that, you know, he's doing the types of things councilmember Lipton is talking about. Bring, he's bringing a couple of seasonals in, in-house and they'll be full-time. And, you know, staff's looking at whether the, just to present options for council on the balance of contract services and full-time service. So those are the types of things that, that we're hoping to see back from them when they come back with their maintenance plan. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thank you. The, the one thing that I, before we wrap this up, I'd like to get a sense of when we're going to see an update to council, whether it's a more concrete, something in writing type plan and/or a budget amendment. And I'd like to lock that down so that the community can have some certainty that things are moving forward.
City manager Davis.
I would say in the next probably month, I mean, it will, it'll hopefully be the shorter time that we bring, you know, an RFP to or bring a request for an amendment and, and hopefully at that same time, we can bring some proposed short-term needs that we think that we, you know, realistically can accomplish in the short term. You know, again, based on what we're seeing with contract arrangements, staffing, et cetera. So that will be our plan is to try to bring those two things together in the next month or so. And then, you know, once we get a little bit, once we get that plan either completed or well underway and have a sense of where we're going with it, then we'll be able to come back. I'm guessing that'll be sometime in the Q1 of 2022 that we'll actually be able to say, these are some of the things, you know, that we would be able to spend some of that placeholder money in.
Thank you, city manager. So the, so, so we can expect to see more information, including a budget amendment, it sounds like, or something along those lines by, by the end of October.
Yeah, yeah, that should be, I think that's, yeah, we definitely want to bring something forward. We might have to come back again, but.
That's fine. I mean, that's fine. If you come back again, I think that's fine. I just, I'm, I just want to make sure that we don't lose momentum on this, you know, and and especially that the folks who turned in or have been writing to us feel like they don't have to continue to come to council and complain to make sure that we're paying attention. So thank you.
All right, councilmember Lay, close us out on this one and then start us off on the next topic.
Yeah, what I was going to say is I think it's good to talk at the, as councilmember Brown just said, at council meetings about whatever you're doing. I think what I would encourage you to do is to post on social media, what kind of things you're doing in the short run, where you're working, where things are happening. I, I think that's really helpful. I think people do appreciate, people don't expect everything is going to happen at once, but I think people really appreciate the effort and knowing that they're being heard. And, you know, you're doing that stuff anyway. And I just encourage you, let's, you know, give, give yourself some credit for what you're doing. And I know you are doing it. And so are we, where are we going next? Are we going, are we going to the museum stuff or are we there yet?
Well, let's close out this first A bullet before we go to B. If there are any other topics from folks under the, any questions about the changes that staff has made in response to our previous budget comments? So that if we don't have any other comments, the consensus would be that we're happy with the ARPA discussion where it is. And then we can continue to discuss priorities as they come forward throughout the budget cycle in the next two years. Is everybody okay with that? We have the 2022, 2023 budget process to continue to figure out what we need to do for COVID response and recovery. Okay. Any other topics on this first section? So I
Could we just have a moment?
Yes, sir.
I just want to scan, I want to opportunity to just scan the document, see if I have any other comments for us before we close it out.
I'm not going to close it. I had one. So I was, I was letting you guys all go first and I'll, I'll give mine. That'll give you time to think through your other comments and questions for this section. So I know you guys know I sit on a lot of different boards and committees for us. And two of those, one is Denver Regional Council of Governments and one is Urban Drainage Flood Control District. And I just have had a bit of a panic lately because of all of the discussions around staffing at those two organizations, like we're losing people. You know, they're just like engineers, planners, maintenance technicians, mowers, the guys who do the cement, the gals who do the cement, they're, it's just a really wild west job market at the moment. So people are just go, they, you know, you can get a significant increase if you leave right now. And so I just have a growing concern around that issue within our city. We have some really valuable employees that we want to ensure we retain. And we've had an incredibly stressful two-year period. I know our community has a very high expectation of how we perform. And that's fine. I'm not criticizing that. I'm just observing that, that there's a very high expectation for how public servants perform. And so it is always a stressful job and the global pandemic has really added to that stress and people's jobs have become much more complicated. And at times we have had staff members that literally have been risking their lives for the community. We had policemen and women coming in during the pandemic when other people were sent home. We had water operators, wastewater operators and others that were coming in when others had to stay at home. So I just, in, in sitting in those other meetings at those other agencies, I've just been growing more and more concerned about our existing staff. And I know the city manager is working on all those things and has looked at market adjustments and trying to keep up and things like that. But I wondered about proposing some kind of a bonus for those employees who had to come in during the shutdown period to recognize that work. It's a, I know we have some one-time funds that couldn't go to raises or things like that, that everyone deserves a raise. Everyone's doing a great job. I understand that. But we also have the fiscal reality that we can't afford that in the long run either. And we've been challenged with that as a council. So I wonder if the group would entertain some type of a one-time bonus situation for folks that were coming in during the lockdown or, or something along those lines. And I wonder if the group would entertain a discussion around that. Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, I, I think you, I really appreciate your raising that, mayor, because I, I think that in, in considering the last eighteen months, you know, it's, it's, it's nice on the one hand to have made it through a lot of things, but we, we've still got people taking risks and we're asking them to do that. I, I'm all for setting aside some money and and, um, and, and perhaps, uh, the city manager along with HR can do that. I, I want, and we don't have to deal with this now, but it's certainly going to be something that that I, I hope the next council will be thinking, uh, about because I, I think we, our biggest, you know, one of our biggest items in the budget, uh, is our labor, uh, amount. And I think we're facing a very difficult labor market all over the place and some really wild things are happening. You're seeing this in a whole bunch of different organizations at once there. And I appreciate your being a little, um, unnerved by it. I think, I mean, in my day job, I'm not necessarily surprised because I, I'm hearing the same things every single day from clients. So I think we may need to look a little even, even broader, but on, on the main or on the small point that you're raising, absolutely, uh, support it. And I don't know what the number is. But I, I do think that that would help morale. I think it would be a sign of a certain kind of fairness in the sacrifices that these people have made and the risks that they have borne. But I do think in the longer term, we, we do have some, some bigger issues that we're going to have to deal with, just like some of these organizations that you are, you've talked about. So thanks.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Lay. Mayor Potem Maloney?
Um, conceptually, I, I, I like the idea. I support the, the concept. Are you, uh, looking at the American Rescue Plan Act and item two of the ways to find for eligible expenditures? Which is premium pay for eligible workers? Was that along the lines of what you're considering?
So I, I do believe the American Recovery Plan Act funds are, this is an eligible expenditure for those, but I also don't think that council necessarily wants to get into the business of defining which things we apply for recovery funding or not. So I, I think this is a priority. I do think it's eligible for that funding, but if we use that funding for lost revenue, that may or may not be the best way to account for it.
Right, right. So, so I understand the, the tactical piece, but you're, I'm saying within the spirit of um, that, so eligible workers would be those who are put into more of a risky situation. So I heard you mention public safety. Uh, certainly utility people, um, who had to work in those period of times. And there may be some other, other categories. So, you know, I would like to see, uh, you know, more information here. I think it's an interesting idea and along the lines of council life, we need to understand what this means cost-wise as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Potem Maloney. Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I don't have any particular objection about rewarding staff, but I, I would like to hear more from our HR director and get some advice on this. I mean, and I think we gotta figure out what our goals are. If our goals are for retention, then we gotta figure out what is the best way to accomplish retention. And if it's through some one-time non-base building bonus money, that's, that's fine. But I, I, I think, I think this needs to be, um, examined a little bit so we really get the results that we're trying to get, get. And, and not just, you know, throw money at staff and not get the intended result. So I, I, I'm supportive of doing something for staff, but I'd just sure like to hear some more from, um, our staff. City manager's office to figure out what is the best way of doing it so that it's targeted and that it's, it's, uh, goal oriented.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. Just to clarify the proposal that I'm making and I, you know, that I think maybe we could give direction to Megan to bring this back as an item, once HR has had a chance to think about it. And, but the goals that there would be maybe two programs that are separate. Uh, one goal would be to reward and thank employees who really put their life on the line during COVID nineteen. When, and in a time there were so much unknown, uh, and, and a lot of people were sent home. Now, the people who were sent home went through trials and tribulations of their own, and I'm not trying to shortchange that, but they, there were folks in our city that really did put their life on the line for the community. So one would be to recognize that group of individuals and then a different program, perhaps the goal would be retention. And so maybe, um, there's two programs that we could come back and understand. And I think your point is well made that, you know, those things might not have perfect alignment, that they might be different programs or might be a good way of doing it and having HR in the city manager's office figure out how to implement that would be important. Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I think to your, to your last point there, Mayor, I mean, I, I hundred percent support the concept of, um, bonus, bonuses for those two different, um, reasons. Um, I, I just, I, I would assume that, you know, were, were we as a council to say, um, you know, City Manager Davis, you know, here's, here's a million dollars. Please figure out the right people that need to, I mean, I, I don't know if directors were working hundred-hour weeks during the pandemic or, you know, I'll joke, or whether they were at home working thirty hours a week. Um, we know that one isn't the case, right? But I don't know if, if it's that director level that really put in the extra time, or if it was staff, or if it was, you know, uh, lower staff and each director might have that, like I, I'm so far from knowing the answers to that, um, that I, I'm, I'm wary as a council member to, to weigh in too much more than on the general concept, like we, we would like people who risk their lives and worked overtime without extra pay to be compensated. I think that's, I like that word a lot. Um, to be compensated for all of that extra effort and risk. And we trust Megan Davis to, to, you know, give us a, a concept of how she would like to, um, dole that out. But, um, I love the idea and I think it's long overdue.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. And I, I'll try not to insert myself anymore in this conversation, but my only concern is like, um, I, I worked in, I worked in a job, um, where I had, I literally had training on being kidnapped and like had to learn how to escape from a trunk and like, um, had a card I was supposed to give kidnappers when I was taken and, um, like it does wear on you when you feel like you are being, putting your life on the line for a job. And it's really hard to put an amount of money that's worth that. And so whatever we're going to do for bonuses is not going to be worth the effort and the risk that was undertaken. So I am concerned about using the word compensated because that doesn't make us even. I just think it's a recognition of that effort that's been put in, but I, I just am concerned to call it compensation because it's like, this was public service and people really went above and beyond. And there's not a monetary value that we can put forward to show how grateful we are as a community for what people have done. So I, this is like a token of appreciation.
I appreciate your distinction of that.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Faki?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with what you just said, Mayor. I think it's incredibly important to acknowledge and show appreciation for the staff, what they've done for, for the people who have put themselves in very dangerous, risky situations. And for the everyday person who just shows up and does their job. And I think we've not done of, an excellent job of acknowledging and appreciating the efforts that the staff puts in. So I would like to come up with some kind of program, uh, with Megan or with our, our HR director to make a suggestion of how we could most effectively and in a most appreciative manner, acknowledge what our staff has done for us.
Thanks, Councilmember Faki. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm fully supportive of this and I, I would really encourage this council to, focus on frontline staff. Um, I think the, 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 I, the, many of the, um, groups of our staff who the mayor identified, um, sort of our first responders, if you will, um, folks that are utility, uh, folks. You know, I, I, we forget, right, how scary those first months were when we didn't know how it was transmitted. How, you know, I was bleaching bananas that I would bring home from the grocery store, right? Because we didn't know, we didn't know how it spread, right? And so, so, you know, folks went to work without knowing whether, you know, they were putting themselves at grave risk. And so I, I want to show, I want to show my appreciation. I also want to make sure that we don't lose frontline staff. I think to the, to the previous conversation that we had, uh, just a minute ago, um, it's really important in a tight labor market for us to be able to, to, to compensate people well and to ensure that they, they stay with us as opposed to find employment elsewhere.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Lay?
I want to make the announcement that we're not in any way encouraging the use of bleach in, in gesting food in the Louisville or any other area. Thank you. But no, in all seriousness, um, notwithstanding, I have no idea what Council Brown was just talking about, but I do recognize we were all very, there was a lot of uncertainty last year. And I, I agree that it isn't a matter of compensation. It's a matter of really just recognizing above and, and beyond. And I, I think the other piece is, and it's a little bigger piece again, has to do with morale, but I, I think what the mayor mentioned really is that piece of it. It's like, do you guys even know what we did? Do you even kind of care? And I think we can do, I think we can do just, just a lot with just some recognition. And I hope that the city manager will take back to those people, regardless of what happens tonight on this right now, that we really, really appreciate what those people did. And that it, it, they, the sacrifice that they made and the risks that they took without knowing the magnitude of what the risk is, which is really scary stuff. We forget about that. I'll think a little bit. Really matters to us. And those people really matter to us and we're loyal to their, to what they did for us and we can't thank them enough. We're thanking them a little in some way. And hopefully they'll appreciate that too. But in any event, it's worth.
So it sounds like there's agreement to, um, that we all recognize we don't know how to do this properly. It looks like Rhonda is on. And so she's heard all of this feedback and will be able to help us, um, for, um, craft this appropriately to respond. And, um, I'll just turn it to City Manager Davis to see if you need us to give any more direction around this topic? Or if you think you can come back with a proposal based on this discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm usually not at a loss for words, so I, I think you know that, but I will just say, I just really greatly appreciate the comments that have been made. And, um, I think you all have characterized well some of the experiences that our employees have had. And it's, it has been a long road. It's been a long road for all of us. And, and a lot of people who, like you said, have had to work through very difficult situations and conditions and, and uncertainties. And so, um, I, I will certainly pass that on and make sure that I, you know, share this with employees. And then I think, um, we will definitely look for some ideas. Fortunately, whether or not we, you know, would use ARPA or not, there is some sort of structure and guidance and some examples around how we might look at, you know, structuring something around premium pay or bonuses like that. So I think we can come back to, um, with a plan around that. And then, of course, retention. We've been looking a lot at how our recruitment and retention during these kind of uncertain times with the labor market. So, um, this is very helpful. And again, we really, um, I really do appreciate not just the comments, but also the, the financial commitment and willingness to make some investments in this area, um, to recognize the employees and, and try to retain as many of our great employees that we can.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, so that closes out that discussion. So we can expect to see a budgetary impact from this conversation. So don't be alarmed when you see that change. Remember that we had this conversation. And any other topics, um, on this section of the meeting? Councilmember Lipton?
Yes, thank you. So I do have some questions on page forty-two of the packet, the Recreation Fund. And, um, I'll start with Kevin. Kevin, I, I recollection, I, I'm not sure we took care of it tonight, but there, we're totally took care of it tonight, but there was, um, excess funds in the construction account that we talked about, perhaps programming for some future projects necessary for the building. And I, I know you talked about moving some money, uh, perhaps into a reserve account for the rec fund, but I'm, I'm not sure we got to everything we were thinking about last time we talked about this. Specifically, there were some projects proposed for twenty twenty-three and out that I suggested if we had the funding, maybe we wanted to advance those projects for purposes of energy conservation and energy management. And, uh, so I was wondering if we could maybe have that conversation a little bit more and bring closure to that.
Okay, well, let me, uh, talk about what we've done. First of all, we've, uh, based upon, um, the Parks and Rec's latest project list, we've proposed a budget for twenty twenty-two out of the Recreation Center Construction Fund. That's where the bond proceeds went and all the transfers of what ninety thousand dollars, ninety-three thousand dollars. And then remember we had, we, we originally had a hundred and twenty-five thousand and then the remaining ninety thousand, we were going to transfer to the Recreation Center Debt Service Fund. And I, and I believe, uh, Councilmember Lipton, you, you questioned, uh, that transfer. So what we've done, we've adjusted next year's appropriation, not out of the Recreation Fund, but out of the Recreation Center Construction Fund, the bond proceeds, we've adjusted that appropriation to ninety-three thousand, but we haven't transferred the remaining amount. We've decided we will leave it in there. And then as these projects come forward, specifically, we talked about the HVAC replacement, very large, uh, project that's scheduled for twenty-three and twenty-four. We may be able to use some of these construction funds, uh, these bond proceeds funds, so to speak, to, to help us fund those. Does that answer your question?
You're on mute.
Sorry, uh, Kevin. Yes, thank you. I think it does. So what you're saying, there's still opportunities to do that, just hasn't been totally ferreted out yet. Uh, and there are some projects like, you know, installing, uh, underwater LED lights and things like that, which, you know, aren't a huge number, but it seems to be kind of a no-brainer of things we should be doing and try to do sooner than pushing them out. And there are probably some other, and others in that category. So I, I don't want to lose the, um, the thinking behind this, although I think from what you're saying, it's just going to take a little bit more time, but the opportunity is there.
Yes, that's correct. The, the funds will remain there until we decide to appropriate those to whatever capital project, um, we decide upon.
So could I, could I ask Mayor, the rest of council would be supportive of trying to utilize those funds towards energy management type projects that qualify in the, in the Recreation Center or Memory Square Pool?
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. I think we have allocated funding through other channels to do that. And I'm, I'm very supportive of doing that. I guess the principles I would use to expend this money is projects that were envisioned as part of the Rec Center capital expansion. So if there were things that were cut from the expansion, we should add those back in. So like the jumpy thing at Memory Square Pool, the climbing wall. There were, there were a number of things that were cut and, uh, landscaping is dead and dying that was put in with construction. So I guess my preference would be to spend it on things that are directly associated with the expansion project. And I'm happy to support the types of projects you're talking about also.
Well, okay, I'm, and, and I'm fine with that. That's fair. But maybe, you know, if there is money in the capital fund, and the Recreation Fund, to consider some of these, uh, projects in the out years and move them forward, you know, within the constraints of the budget, just so they get more attention more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. So I think the next time that'll come up is in the discussion of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. So if there are projects, um, for, you know, that the Rec Center staff has that are associated with that, they'll bring them forward at this time. Anything else on that topic? Any other topics from folks? All right. I think, um, I really would like to thank, um, the Finance Department for always providing, um, detailed and quick responses to all of our budgetary questions. I know everybody got their questions answered outside the meeting. So thank you for that. And for the accuracy and thoroughness of the reporting that you do and all the different model runs you do for us on the charts. And thank the city manager's office for responding to all the changes that we've asked for so far to this point. So it seems like we'll see a few more changes in the final version of the budget based on the feedback tonight. So don't be surprised when we see those. Um, but outside of that discussion, the last topic we have is the museum expansion design funding. But outside of that discussion, the last topic we have is the museum expansion design funding. And it's, and it's its own topic. And so we'll move to that topic at this time and I'll turn it over to the City Manager for a presentation. City Manager Davis?
Um, okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm going to turn it over to our Library and Museum Director Sharon Nemeczek and Bridget Bacon are going to be providing a presentation and overview of this item.
Excellent. Thank you. Take it away, Sharon, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Stolzmann, members of council. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Good. This is Sharon Nemeczek, Director of Library and Museum Services. I am going to share my screen if all goes well. All right. Can you see the PowerPoint?
We can, and now it's in full screen mode. It looks great.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this evening on the CIP request for the museum expansion project. I know it looks like there's a lot of information in your packet, but we have two speakers this evening who are going to focus on some key points from that information that you received. We hope to be respectful of everybody's time. So first up this evening is Bridget Bacon. She's our Museum Services Supervisor. Bridget has been with the museum for seventeen years, many of those years as the only museum employee. She now supervises a team of three part-time museum technicians. And then after Bridget, we've got Jennifer Henderson. Jen is Lewisville History Foundation Board Member. She has a master's degree in museum studies and twenty years' experience in museum work. She specializes in fundraising and grant writing for museums. So thank you again for allowing us to present this evening and I'm going to turn it over to Bridget.
Thank you, Sharon. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Great. And thank you, Mayor Stolzmann and members of City Council for this opportunity. I was asked to give you the history of the museum and this project. Next slide, please. As you know, for the past seven years, we've been seriously exploring the idea of a museum expansion in order to welcome more visitors, share more inclusive history with our community, improve access and provide a gathering space that encourages the exploration of our town history and culture. Next slide. For this presentation, we plan to briefly go over the timeline of relevant events, give an overview of the needs and give possible options for a path forward. Next slide. So the city purchased the four lots on Main Street to be or hold a historical museum in 1983 for $50,000. Next slide. The staffing was all volunteer until 1999, when one part-time position was created and the museum had one staff member until 2015. The Jordan Ellie House and Summer Kitchen were donated to the city for the museum in 2001. Next slide. A significant milestone for the museum was in 2004, when the city got a grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Services. And this was so that there could be an expert evaluation conducted for a conservation assessment program report. And the report assessed the museum space and recommended that the city construct a new purpose-built facility on site. And this recommendation then became the catalyst for the other items that we're going to highlight tonight. Next slide. I want to specifically mention the foundation, the Lewisville History Foundation. Since 2014, the foundation has been just a tremendous partner that has made significant financial investments to support museum services to the community. Next slide. Building on the recommendation to construct a purpose-built facility in 2014, a firm conducted a needs assessment of the museum. And the image here shows the ways in which the consultants were inspired by the culture of Lewisville to consider ways of bringing vitality and gathering space to the museum campus. And in 2015, 2016, the business plan was created and it gave recommendations and insights for utilizing a new space. Next slide. In 2017, the firm, the Roybal Corporation, created a conceptual design to make sure that the space on Main Street would be workable and could meet the identified needs. And it concluded that it could. Also in 2017, looking ahead to the need to obtain additional operational funding for more staffing for when there could be a museum expansion, the Historical Commission and History Foundation worked with the Historic Preservation Commission on proposed ballot language for the historic preservation tax extension. And this would allow part of the fund to be used for museum operations. And voters did approve the extension for another ten years with the new provision. Next slide. I'm here, the preliminary estimates from the Roybal firm based on just the 2017 conceptual design. The image on this slide is from the presentation to City Council and it suggests the ways in which the design of a new building addition could draw visual cues from buildings in Lewisville's history and the historic building that used to stand on the site. Next slide. Also in 2017, the History Foundation paid for a feasibility study that looked into both the challenges and the opportunities for fundraising in our community. Next slide. After the City Council received the conceptual design, the advice that City Council gave was to obtain precise cost estimation. And there was also a recognition at the time that a schematic design and a solid expectation of the costs would give the foundation and the Historical Commission a stronger tool for community engagement. And in 2019, the City Council approved funding for a schematic design that would allow the foundation and commission to go back to the community with cost estimates. Next slide. The museum's mission statement adopted in 2019 is be a part of the story. And it was intended to align the mission with what the museum was already doing. The value of inclusivity already was and still is evident in the museum's collection practices and programming. And the mission statement is really an acknowledgement that history is sort of the thread that connects our area's earliest inhabitants to new people moving to Lewisville. Next slide. The kickoff meeting of the group working on the schematic design took place on March 10th, 2020. And you may have noticed this was one day before March 11th, which is what has been called the day that everything changed. And the city then canceled the contract due to not being able to carry out the community engagement and due to budgetary concerns understandably. I think that for a lot of people, we've, we've had a lot of shared collective experiences relating to the pandemic. And these are mixed with more personal experiences that we're always going to remember as individuals. And obviously, there were much more important things happening in the world at the time and we were all experiencing collective shock and anxiety and grief, just as what was being referenced earlier in this meeting. And for those of us who had been trying to put the parts in place for a successful museum expansion, those reactions were also layered with worry for the future of the museum and the sense that this important step of obtaining good information and cost estimation had sort of just disappeared before our eyes, all because of COVID. Next slide. Next, I'd like to touch on the specific needs that have been identified. We love these historic buildings and we love how we can use them to talk about the history of Lewisville. But there's no question that they present challenges on a daily basis in terms of their very small sizes, their layouts, their lack of accessibility and the difficulties that they present in terms of trying to meet archival standards for collections care. And even though we, we all use the word storage and I use it too, what we're talking about is the responsible and professional care and conservation of historical artifacts and photos and historic newspapers that mostly Lewisville residents have donated and entrusted to the city. Next slide. Here is the first of two slides listing the identified needs that a museum expansion would address. And I would especially like to highlight the first item. Our Lewisville Museum and every historical museum needs a community space where everyone feels comfortable and welcome and where there's room to experience our collective history and culture. Next slide. We're so fortunate that the museum is already a gateway into the heart of Lewisville, as well as being a key anchor on Main Street. And it can be so much more of these things. Nothing else on Main Street is anchoring a cultural opportunity for visitors and residents. And now I'd like to turn over the presentation to Jennifer Henderson from the Lewisville History Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. And Mayor and members of City Council, can everyone hear me?
We sure can. And thank you, Bridget. That was a great presentation so far and welcome to Jen.
Thank you. As Bridget noted, the History Foundation's been supporting the museum and this project since 2014. And the three things I wanted to share with you tonight are, one, the museum's really a valued and trusted resource for the community. Two, the museum increases our economic vitality here in Lewisville. And three, the museum represents our diverse history and provides an opportunity for everyone to be part of the story. And here on this slide in particular, I know there's been some discussion about the performance of the museum in the 2020 citizen survey. So here, I just wanted to highlight how much residents love the engaging with this really important city facility. Not pictured here, but from the same survey, 53% of residents supported a new museum building on campus. And on a personal level, I'm an army brat and I moved around an awful lot growing up. And one of the things that my family and I always did was to visit cultural and historic places everywhere we went to understand and get that sense of place that Bridget was identifying about earlier. I personally really care about the museum because it provides my family and I a trusted place to learn about everyone here, how we've lived both past and present and giving us all a sense of a place where we, whether we've lived here a long time or a brand new. Could I have the next slide, please? And here we're just featuring some of the Colorado Creative Economy Report information. And museums across the country in Colorado and in Boulder County are major economic engines. In addition to the notes on this slide here about the economic impact, I wanted to share that Americans for the Arts note, there's no, no recovery without creativity. In the most recent fiscal year 2015 data, cultural activity accounted for 69 million in direct industry expenditures in the city of Boulder alone. Also, in the most recent Colorado Business for the Arts Economic Impact Report, on average, a cultural participant spends an additional $22.50 on non-ticket items per cultural experience. The museum expansion project has significant potential to be this anchor for the Lewisville local economy. A welcoming and approachable building is going to engage residents and visitors with different interests, learning styles and diverse reasons for connecting in the heart of Lewisville. And providing changing exhibitions and changing education programming creates new reasons for returning. Next slide, please. The Lewisville History Museum is not a time capsule, but rather a dynamic and responsive resource, a through line for all of us. And being such a trusted and engaging place for residents to come, learn, engage and share is, is really valuable. Next slide, please. Because the Lewisville History Museum is a city facility, having city support will be critical to supporting our fundraising campaign. As a foundation, we can't collect donations from donors such as individuals, foundations or corporations and begin a capital campaign without that legal commitment and agreement from the city. Next slide, please. This slide shows the total investments from the city of Lewisville and the Lewisville History Foundation in support of the museum. I want to point out that this slide does not reflect the $30,000 payment in 2020. The city paid on that canceled contract that Bridget mentioned for work that was completed at the beginning, but then had to be canceled due to the pandemic in March 2020. And I want to turn it back to Sharon Nemeczek now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jen and Bridget. So as you all look to provide direction to staff on this project, we wanted to offer a few maybe alternative options for you to consider. They're listed here and they also are on page, I think, five twelve of your packet. So I can keep this slide up if you want this during discussion or I can stop sharing. I think you all have these options in your packet and we are obviously happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Sharon. And it's easier to see everybody's face, but we might ask you to bring this slide back up. But if you don't mind bringing it down for just a minute and then if people want to bring it back up, we could. Thank you so much for that. And so that takes us to our public comment portion of this agenda item tonight. If any folks would like to comment to council, now would be the time to raise your hand on this agenda item and let us know what you'd like to tell us. And first, just as a reminder, let us know your name and your address and then you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to. First up, we have Catherine Westling.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Stolzmann and members of council. My name is Catherine Westling and I live at 514 West Fur Way. As a Lewisville native and the Chair of the Lewisville History Foundation, I'm incredibly proud of Lewisville's history and the Lewisville Historical Museum. Our hardworking museum staff has advanced their programming in recent years, digging deeper into our cultural history and social issues and featuring collections in innovative ways while strengthening the educational connections between schools, families and history. One of the highest impact ways to enable museum staff to further engage the community in a more inclusive history is to give them the resources they need, which includes appropriate workspaces and adequate storage. I feel strongly the city should invest in a schematic design in order to demonstrate a commitment to the project, but more importantly, to allow the city and the Lewisville History Foundation to make an informed decision in 2023 about whether to pursue the project. The city should invest in and improve our museum like it does any other city facility, keeping it up to date and ensuring the facility can appropriately support its staff, collections and mission. I truly feel the Lewisville Historical Museum is a necessity to the city and not an amenity. In closing, I'd like to ask Mayor Stolzmann and members of council to think back to your campaigns and ask yourself if you campaigned on the small town character of Lewisville. Nothing captures a small town character's soul and past like it's an museum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jennifer Berryhill. It looks like you might be muted on your end.
Okay, how's that?
Now we can hear you.
Sorry, and it's not really Jennifer Berryhill, it's Jessica Spanerella. So good evening and thank you. And you guys can hear me okay now?
We sure can.
Okay. My name is Jessica Spanerella and I live at 1515 Main Street. I am a fourth generation Lewisville resident. I sit on the Board of Directors for the Lewisville History Museum, History Foundation, and also have had the opportunity to volunteer at the museum. I have seen firsthand the positive impact the museum has on all who walk in the door. From students, our own residents to out-of-town visitors, our museum provides a positive experience to all of our community. The museum brings our stories to life and should have a lively future. I urge the council to invest in the schematic design and community outreach for the museum expansion project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan M.
Hi, it's Dan Malish, 590 West Willow Court in Lewisville. And thank you, City Council, for giving this another look. I, on the fourteenth meeting, it sounded like it was not going to go forward. And so thanks for Councilmember Lipton for, in particular, for, for helping to, to push this to at least another revisit. I know that some of the council was not on when this originally was approved to go to contract. So thanks for taking the extra look. And I am just so inspired by what I just heard, the presentations for this journey that we've been on for so long. And the amount of work that's gone into it since, really wow, 2004, when that grant to, was, was recommended to build a new building or now an expansion to the footprint of the campus. And I just think that the possibilities are limitless. And what could, could, could go to stand there on the campus? It's already an amazing place and the staff and volunteers are brilliant as I've, I've seen just, just coming more and more on, in terms of their social media presence and the, the programming that I see in the, in the, in the store window. And it's, again, I think that if we just search and, and use the creativity that I've already shown to consider what this really could blossom to become, I, I think we'd all be so thrilled by the outcome. There have been a lot of starts and stops along the way and some, some very obvious ones. And I just encourage us to try and gain some continuity and see what we can do to give this the real footing that it, that it needs and that it needs and deserves revisiting it now. So encourage you to go all in on what this could become and thanks again for your time.
Thanks, Dan. Next, we have Missy Deal.
Good evening, Mayor Stolzman and City Council. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. My name is Missy Deal. I live at nine forty-one St. Andrews Lane. I do want to start by thanking each of you for your service for this great town. I'm a fourth-generation native to Louisville and I'm grateful to each and every citizen who give their time, talent, and energy to making Louisville the best city it can be. So thank you very much to each and every one of you. Also, as a fourth-generation native, I've had the great fortune of seeing Louisville develop into one of the best cities to live in in America. And the components that contributed to this incredible reputation have roots deep in our past. Events like the Fall Festival, the Labor Day Parade, the investment in Monarch High School, and a Vista Hospital have made this the incredible town we are all lucky enough to call home. The leaders and trailblazers that built this town focus on those advancements for the future. They want it all who come here to have a great education, great access to healthcare, and great civic and social experiences. I'm hopeful that this council will build upon that robust momentum of our past and invest in the museum expansion. I've also been fortunate to have experience working in a museum in a major city, and I have seen what an asset, a venue such as a museum serves a city. It brings community, government, and cultures together to celebrate, learn, and grow together. In Denver, the Museum of Nature and Science, where I was lucky enough to work, serves as a premier destination for vast audiences to convene. And we could use this museum expansion in this very matter. I encourage Mayor Stolzman and council to invest in our future, which is what the museum expansion will do. It will elevate all of us to continue to be the outstanding small-town in America that we are. Please do not miss this opportunity and time to make a mark on history. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is folks' chance to comment on this agenda item. And so if you would like to, this is the time and you should raise your hand. All right. Seeing no other public comments on this agenda item, it takes us over to council discussion. I know we kicked off a little bit of discussion last time. I'm sure it will be robust again tonight, but I'll just start with my comments. So first, I just really like to thank Bridget Bacon. I think nobody in town can think about the museum without thinking of Bridget. And she is an institution in herself, and I know we all enjoy reading her reports. She's an excellent writer, probably the brightest person in the city. So, I mean, we can't really thank her enough. And so this isn't, in my opinion, about whether we think the museum is good or bad, or whether the museum has done good or bad. Everyone on council, since I've been on, has supported expanding museum services and offerings. When, we're almost, we're almost funding it at a level ten times higher than I was when I first got on council, and we've supported that. The council's also given direction to staff that we all think that the items that we've collected and all of our collections need to be stored properly. And even if we were to agree to approve this schematic design, we are years and years and years away from a building being built. And so, you know, council has said time and again, for years, for several years in a row, that we need appropriate storage of our collection. And so there needs to be an interim or permanent archival storage solution. So that argument needs to go away. I mean, we've supported that. We've said to come back to us with that, and we continue to not have that. So if anyone says we're not storing our collection appropriately, I have heard from everyone on council that it's our expectation that we store it. And so we need to find offsite storage, whether we approve this tonight or not, because this won't be built for several years, even if we approve designs tonight. I want to thank the History Foundation and even before that, the members, you know, who had the vision of the museum, the people who came before us who have been collecting things, the people who have donated things, and the members of the community, of course, who have, you know, voted to expand funding from the Historic Preservation Tax to help with the museum. That really has helped a lot. And so all of those things are great, and I'm really very proud when I see the services and programming that the new staff are putting on. And we don't just have one person working over there alone. We now have a really great team over there. So I think there's a lot of fantastic work happening at the museum. And I hope to see continued efforts in the direction they're moving. They're moving in the right direction, growing membership, albeit slowly. Not, the growth in membership has not kept up with the growth in funding that we've added. So I would hope to see more membership growth over time as we get the word out. So I guess this is where I deviate from some of the comments that have been made, and I feel like there's a disconnect for me. So council approved and we did design work for the museum and we have a cost estimate. We could do more design work and we will still only have a cost estimate that we'll still have to build in a forty-five percent contingency for. So we won't have better information than we have now. We know that it will take six million dollars when we did the underpass budget, and that was in twenty seventeen, six million dollars. So I don't know if anybody knows, but there's been insane inflation in construction and it's very hard to hire anyone. So try inflating that number to today's number and then add in a forty-five percent contingency, like everyone did for the underpass fund. And then what number do you get? So this is not an inexpensive proposal. And so I guess I could support tonight, giving staff direction to bring back a resolution to council saying that we will support building and expansion if the foundation raises six million dollars. I continue to hear this chicken and the egg. There's no council support. So we can pass a resolution stating that we'll support it if the foundation, you know, we will build it if the foundation brings six million dollars forward. But I just have concerns spending two hundred thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars, or fifty thousand dollars, or five thousand dollars to support another design that we don't have any way of implementing. Now, I don't have a problem with spending two hundred thousand dollars at the museum. So if the museum has roofwork, structural work, storage work, you know, the great new patio area, if we want to get a touring exhibit on indigenous people, if there are other programming needs, if there are onsite irrigation issues, if there are facilities needs with air conditioning or HVAC or efficiency. It's not about whether or not we should spend money at the museum. It's that if we invest this money in the additional design work, I don't feel like that moves the ball down the field for getting the expansion built. It's just, it's just spending more money on a design. So we need to have a tactical plan on how to raise ten-plus million dollars that we don't have today. And so that is a conversation worth having amongst ourselves. But I just don't see that the investment in this next level of design at this point in time is a good thing to do. But I do hope that we get appropriate archival space storage brought back to us as a proposal and budget amendment. And I'm more than happy to support a resolution saying that if the foundation raises, you know, six-plus million dollars, that we would build a museum. I just want to quote Councilmember Fahey, and then I'll turn it over to her because her hand is up. But earlier in the meeting, we heard Councilmember Fahey's sage advice that we need to maintain what we have before we add more. And I think that is exactly the position we're in on this. And so I just can't tonight go forward with the supporting of this additional study. But there are lots of things at the museum I could support expanding on and adding. So with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do support maintaining what we have before we add more. And we actually have maintained what we have at the museum, except for the storage of artifacts and also the maintenance of the structures themselves in that if we took all of the extra things out of the museum bedrooms in the Jordanelli House and things and displayed them better or stored them more appropriately, we would be able to expand the story that the museum is telling. My personal feeling is that there isn't anything that brings more people to downtown Louisville in support of our businesses, of our town in general, to visit our parks, to go to any of our cultural events, than the museum. The museum is what's the heartbeat of the town. It always has been, and I think it always will be. I think we need to support it. And as one person mentioned, without the support of the city, the foundation wouldn't be able to raise the money that's needed. I am one hundred percent in favor of redoing this. This was budgeted at one point. At one point, two years ago, it was important to council and to the residents of the city. And the residents wanted it to be, the study to be done, for this study to be done so that we can get some accurate cost estimates of what this building will actually be and provide the function that it could provide. It could be, as I said, in addition to storing artifacts, it's a community gathering space. It's an educational facility. It's going to do the history of the town. Back to, if you go to the timeline that was just posted online, the history of this town goes back all the way to the dinosaurs and why we have coal here that people came to dig up. So we need to promote this, and I think that building this building is what's going to give us the ability to provide office space for our staff, provide the community resource room in addition to the storage of the artifacts. So I think it's very important to build this building. And doing this study will enable us to dedicate money toward the building of the building, but also encourage the donation of money to the foundation or from the foundation to the city. And I gotta say, we're kind of overlooking the fact of all of the time and effort and the structures that were donated to the city in the past. The Jordanelli House and the Summer Kitchen were a donation by a local Louisville family. The, the mother of the family that donated it was raised in that house, and they donated it to the city. Every artifact that's in that building has been donated by the residents, mostly by residents, to the city. So to say that the residents haven't supported the museum is, is false. It's just absolutely false. The residents are the ones that started the museum and have kept it going all these years. So I am a hundred percent in favor of keeping this money in there and doing the design work. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. Other folks? Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, I appreciate the presentations. I appreciate the materials that were provided to us. And I guess, to, you know, I appreciate the frustration of council because I know that there is a sense in which, you know, because I've been on the council long enough to hear, to remember that, you know, we've provided some money and the hope was that that was going to be used to kind of create additional excitement, incentive for the collection of additional funds. And so some of what we're hearing, I think, or we have heard, and I think partly the comments of the mayor, I think reflect some of that. And I'm not going to speak for the mayor, but I mean, some disappointment with the fact that more hasn't materialized. And so I do, I do appreciate that. And I think that, you know, when we're talking about the schematics, I think it's not an insignificant amount of money that we're talking about and the additional work that we've discussed or that has been requested. So, you know, it's not a matter of just saying, well, this is a pittance. I, I do, and I'm, I've been a supporter of the underpasses. But the amount that is at issue here pales by comparison to what we're thinking of asking the voters for in a couple of months. And I'm not suggesting that that's a problem, but I do say that we got to keep this all in perspective. I think that the one thing that really has changed perhaps is the passage of time and COVID since we appropriated this money for these schematics. And I don't think that's a very good reason for going back and changing things. I also don't think that the message that would be sent by appropriating funds for this necessarily means that we are setting an expectation that council is going to fund the majority or all of this project. I don't think that's what's happening here. I think this, what I would say is that this commitment is one that is incredibly important to the city. I think the schematics will help raise that money. I am willing to put something of a line in the sand about that. I think it is worthwhile asking the foundation to come up with some of the money that's needed. But I also think, and I'm open to that, absolutely, but culture is not a luxury. It is an essential part of what we do in the town. It is correct that when we talk about our small-town character and all of that, well, this is a piece of it. And to say that all we need to do is just keep archiving things is, that's not enough. That just is not enough. That's not enough of a commitment by council. I'm sorry, but I can't support that as being like the be-all and end-all. I think that, and I also don't think that we're necessarily having to trade off that, oh, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars here is, means we can't spend it on something else within the library, or excuse me, the museum. I think that's a choice we may make, but I think that's, that's short-sighted. You know, Fauckter, Fauckter said that the past is never dead. It's never, it's not even past. We are about to embark on a very difficult period, I think, in redefining the culture of, or reframing culture in Louisville. And that is a constant process. It's not, it's not a, a static process. And the idea that, I think going forward, telling the story of people who we haven't told the story of is something that's going to be important. I think this is, in some respect, what I would say is this is a bet, including all these other folks. But this is a wager, you know, a Pascal's wager, that it is worth putting the money that we've already said at one point not long ago, different council members, I'm not going to say that we have to stick with old decisions, but we felt like this was worth doing before. And what has really changed? Well, what's changed is it actually has become more important because we get into these issues of equity, we are going to have to do some work on, on that, on museum exhibits and space. They're going to, I think, the kinds of things that we, you know, need to know about the costs that are going to be helped by the next level of investment is worthwhile. It's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars plus. We can talk about how much it might be. I think it's well worth our council's time. I think it's, I think it's incredibly short-sighted to say that, it's time to just cut it off and be done with it because this is never going to happen. It's not going to happen. We're going to wait until the foundation comes forward. I just don't see that as a really prudent statement to make in this city. And I think it, it's intention, in my view, with what we say all the time about how important history is to the city. And so, you know, I think that a number of these proposals are just fine. I, I am absolutely happy with requiring some commitment by the foundation, but I think we need to, I think we need to come up with the money, at least as much money as we came up and were willing to appropriate before.
Thanks, Councilmember Lee, and I just want to correct any misperceptions about what I said or didn't say. Maybe Councilmember Lee, you weren't talking about me, but I perceived that you were. So I just want to clarify that I didn't suggest that archival storage is an end all. I just suggested that I've heard that our items that are in storage are not being cared for properly. And that, you know, they're not currently on display. And so I think I've heard the entire council suggest that we need appropriate storage for our items. So I just wanted to clarify, I didn't suggest that it was an end all. And I just didn't necessarily, I don't know if you meant it that way, but I didn't appreciate what I felt was you calling me short sighted in saying that there was a trade off in funding. And I just want to clarify, I didn't suggest there was a trade off in funding. And I specifically said, you know, that I, I would be happy to fund other things and it wasn't the value of this thing, it's that this doesn't lead to any other thing. So in, I in fact was trying to say there wasn't a trade off. So perhaps you didn't mean your comments in that way, and I may be taking them the wrong way, but I just want to clarify those things.
Yeah, with respect, Mayor, this isn't about you.
Okay, I mean, I just felt like there were some personal attacks in your comment, so maybe go back and watch the video.
I, I don't really want to watch the video, I want to talk about the issue right now. And the issue right now is, it's fine to do archival storage, that's a necessary but not sufficient issue. It is, if what we're talking about is the concern about spending $160,000, $65,000, whether you or I, doesn't matter, Mayor, whether you are the one articulating or not. I think it's short sighted of us, of us not to come forward with the same amount of money. None of this is about you, it's about, it's about the things I just talked about. I'm going to let my account stand for themselves and I, I, you know, I, I'm not going to get in a, in a, I'm not going to get in a back and forth with you, Mayor, about this issue. It's not, it's not personal, it's institutional and it's cultural.
I appreciate you saying that, I just think it's important we maintain decorum and don't personally attack each other so people can feel free. I mean, it's hard when you're trying to express different points of view, I understand that. And as the person moderating the discussion, I just think it's important that we don't attack one another. Mayor Brad D'Amelani?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, all along through, I've been on council for six years, we've talked about this a number of times since I've been on council. And, you know, I think that I haven't heard anybody on council ever say anything other than positive things about the museum. You know, it's an important institution within our city. We appreciate all the work that Bridgette has done. You know, I, I find the newsletters and the articles and the work that's done at the museum to be terrific. And as Dan said, it's an amazing place. It's not only an amazing place, but it's an amazing experience. You know, the, the rich artifacts that are, that have been donated as, as been, as been said, that are available online. Those are really amazing things. And also moving towards making those university available means doing it more, more digitally, which means a lot more archival in, in many ways. You know, as somebody who's been a genealogist for over 20 years or more, you know, those kind of rich things tell stories. It's not just facts, but now you can understand who people are, especially when you have those videos and those interviews. There's more than just dates and times and places and, and, and so forth. And so there's no question museums are important. You know, what we're dealing with is how do we, how do we do everything? You know, the, what comes before city councils, a lot of requests for really important things. And we always have to make decisions about, you know, what are the priorities? What do we move ahead with? And, you know, part of what was quoted in the presentation was some information from the citizen survey. If you dig deeper into the citizen survey, you start looking at things about citizen support for priorities and funding. And, and quite honestly, the museum isn't high on that list. And then I can't explain that other than that's the, the data we have there. But, you know, I, I do appreciate the work by the History Foundation, the Historic Commission. You know, tireless volunteers working and sharing their expertise. And, you know, so that, that I very much appreciate. One of the things that happened since I've been on council was the change to the historic preservation tax to allocate up to 20% of that for operation, maintenance of the museum. And that's what the mayor was talking about, that the funding has gone up by over 10 times during the last six years that I've been on council. One of the questions that came up at the last time we talked about this, because I was quoting $10 million for a building. If you just take the, the data that we have in the presentation, estimated $5 million in 2017, you ask that by the inflation of construction costs, you're somewhere in the 10 million range. So that is what we're talking about. That's today. If we do a study, we do fundraising, if it's five more years from now, we could be looking at 15 or 20 million dollars. So, and that doesn't even address reoccurring operating and maintenance costs. So I think we have to keep all those things in context because we're always dealing with priorities. In our earlier discussion tonight, you know, we, we, we discussed things that are brought forward to us as priorities by the citizens and trying to find a way being able to do those things. Now, a separate issue, thank you, you know, Councilor Lee, for making sure we separate these issues. You know, the archival is something that I've heard about routinely. And I'd like to see us invest more than that, whether or not there's a building or not, that has to be done. And, and, you know, there's the archival piece, there's the online piece. You know, the care, the conservation of artifacts is, is really important because many of the donations that we have are one of a kind. Those are relics, if they go away, they go away. And, you know, I've been lucky for a lot of my research in, in genealogies, finding artifacts out there that may not exist any longer in their form. But they do exist in a digital form. So I, I think the museum is an important resource for the city. That's why I've spurred over time increasing the funding. So, you know, my perspective is, I don't see how we ever fund that cost of the building unless there is some type of ballot issue that asks that question and the citizens pass that. If you take a look at the citizen survey, the numbers are relatively weak on passing a ballot issue. So that leads me to believe that maybe the timing is not right to do that. One of the things that the mayor suggested, if the foundation would come forward with a significant fundraise. And I know there's a chicken and egg, but we do have schematics. Or at least some level of design documents that could be used. If there's interest and there could be funding, then we could revisit this issue. But at this time, I don't feel comfortable supporting going ahead with the design work without having a plan of how we would fund it in the future. And I don't see a path to doing that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Brad D'Amelani, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I wondered, I have some questions for staff. I wondered if the staff could tell us a little bit about the membership of the museum? How many members does a museum currently have?
Bridgette, can you take that question?
Yes, I can answer that. So the, the number of paying memberships as of the end of 2020 was 828 paying memberships. It has gone up quite a lot. I think in the, in the year that I started in 2004, I think it was less than 200. And then we also do a calculation based on there being three members in a family membership. And if you look at it that way, it would be 1,620 members versus memberships. But it's a very robust membership program. I often get comments from colleagues at other museums, including other city museums. People wondering how Louisville does it with having so many museum memberships, given the size of our town. So it is considered to be a pretty high level for a town of our size.
Thank you, Bridgette, I appreciate that. I have a couple more questions, if it's okay, Mayor. One, another, what is the annual number of people these days that visit the museum in any given year?
Um, just before, well, going back to 2019, we had the highest number of visitors we'd had yet, and it surpassed 5,000 for the first time. And then obviously that, that went down during COVID, when COVID started. But that was in 2019. Before that, it was in the range of, you know, creeping up, I'd say, just about every year, being between 3,000, 4,000, and then getting up to 5,000 in 2019. Does, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you. I wanted to, to, I was just trying to figure out kind of the place that the museum has on Main Street and in our community. And I agree with you that it sounds like that there is a robust membership. And I also would agree that, you know, I think we can do more to build that. I think there are probably many residents within Louisville who have never been to our museum. And if you, if you're only getting 5,000 a year. So I think that's worth, just worth thinking about a little bit. I, I'm wondering, I think for me, you know, I have the utmost respect and appreciation for the work that the museum staff do, you, you do, Bridgette, and that Director Nemec does, running both the library and the museum. And I'm really committed to the history of Louisville and to the museum. But what I continue to struggle with in this particular issue is the sort of path forward. You know, what, what we haven't been presented with by either staff or, or the foundation is sort of a sustainable path forward. How do we, what is the commitment on behalf of the foundation? You know, if the foundation were to raise $10 million, we would gladly build the museum, right? I can, I think I can speak from everyone, for everyone on the council, that if you plop $10 million in our lap, we will build your museum, right? But the, but the, the problem is getting that money, right? And so, you know, we have a lot of other priorities that folks have identified. You know, in, even in just in this meeting. And, and so where do we, where do we find the $10 million to do that? And so I'm still, still struggling with the sustainable path forward and wondering whether an investment at this time is, is really putting us on a, a sustainable path or just another, just another step that doesn't take us any meaningfully farther than we already are. So, thank you for, thank you for indulging my questions and my comments, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Lee?
You know, I, I think what Councilmember Brown just asked is a good question. And it's one that I think it would be, I, I don't know, Mayor, whether it's appropriate, but I guess I, I'd be interested to hear from the foundation on, on that particular point, that is, maybe even very narrowly, how does, you know, what is the sustainable path? But how is, how's this 165,000 plus relating to that? What does that get you, that gets you closer? Because I, I think there's, I mean, you've, you've heard kind of a lot of, a lot of perspectives, I think some really good points. I happen to think, and, and I go, I've helped to, to write some of the citizen surveys. It's one of those, I, I think history in a history museum is one of those things that's going to be tough sometimes to get people to say as a top line priority. We do have a lot of other priorities, absolutely. Cultural resources, I think, are, are always going to be in that odd place of, yeah, really important, but, and I guess I'd be, but I would be interested, and I think, I think I want to maybe ask if, if the mayor would allow it is, is to ask the foundation what they see as that sustainable path.
Can we turn it over to our staff first and then see if they need help from the foundation? Great, so Sharon or Bridgette first on that one and what you think the path forward is?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think that's a question for all of us. And I think what we're looking at this evening is, and this happened before my time with the city, obviously, but the direction from council was to get schematic design for this building, to get better cost estimation. And that would help us kind of come up with a sustainable path forward for funding this project. And I think, my understanding was, and Bridgette, you can correct me, or anyone from council who was on at that time, my understanding was that council really wanted some better cost estimation than we had from the conceptual design phase. And that's why we find ourselves here, that was my understanding. And in terms of a sustainable path forward, I think it's a, it is a conversation between the city and the foundation. And I would, if, if we can, like to hear from Jen, she has some experience working in this area around the difficulties of raising funds for a city owned facility, unless there's a commitment from the city.
And Jen is a panelist and was a presenter previously, so she should be able to chime in.
Hi, this is Jennifer again, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment. I have some personal experience being a friend of the Longmont Museum, a board member as well. That museum used to exist on Main Street many years ago in the city of Longmont, just as the Louisville History Foundation Museum does today. Today, it's in a huge building that was supported through a bond initiative at the city in the early 2000s. And most recently in 2015, the Friends of the Longmont Museum supported an expansion project. But the original building for that did come through the city. So that's one perspective to think about down the line is that this initial city infrastructure investment can provide a foothold for changing exhibitions and that all of these things kind of build on each other over time. Exhibition spaces, the, the programming that builds city support for changing and evolving opportunities with the museum. So I hope that answers your question. And it is challenging to raise private funds without some kind of, I think, city investment first in the infrastructure of the, of the building.
Thank you. Back to Councilmember Lee, did you want to follow up on any of that?
No, I, I think that, I mean, I appreciate that. I guess we'll see if there's other, I mean, others are, have their hand up, I'd be interested in their comments.
Okay, and just it looks like Bridgette Bacon wanted to weigh in on that point as well, or maybe a different point, so we'll go to Bridgette.
Oh, thank you so much, yes, thank you, Mayor, I did want to just weigh in on that point. We were given the, the guidance and advice of getting more cost estimation so that it could help inform the decision of how to, how to fund the project. And we, over the years, there've been these two main possibilities talked about. One being a ballot issue and a drawback that often comes up with respect to that is that it might be too small for a bond issue. And, you know, could it be combined with something else? There've been lots of conversations about that. But also, the, the alternative that's been discussed a lot is doing it, funding it with a mixture of city funds, fundraising that would be done by the foundation, and then grants that I believe we would be eligible for. And there was even talk for a while about, you know, a third, a third, a third to fund the project in that way. But without having the cost estimates, it's very hard to make that decision of, of what funding mechanism. But without having the cost estimates, it's very hard to make that decision of, of what funding mechanism. Would come next and would come out of that. So I just wanted to mention that, that, you know, there have been a lot of conversations about those two main options over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a, a question. Is Director Kower on? He manages a lot of capital projects in our city, and I just wondered if he was on tonight.
No.
I don't think he is.
He is not on.
Okay, never mind then. I was just gonna pick his brain a little bit on, I, I just have. The, the impression that's being given on the level of design we have versus what level of design we're going to. I just, I, I just have a different perception than what's being portrayed, but I think Director Kower would be the one who could help us with that a little bit. Councilmember Fagin?
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to clear up one, well, a couple of things. One is, we have conceptual designs, but we do not have schematics yet. And that's what we'll need in order to come up with a better cost estimate for what this building is going to cost us to build. And that will enable us to decide how much the foundation could raise and how much the city would probably need to put. Toward the construction of the building. I also want to mention that in the 2020 survey. People have been saying how low the, the museum building rated. But that was when it was put up to prioritize it against clean water and nice roads. And things like that. But when they asked, do you support a new building, 53% of the residents said yes. So I think that's pretty good support for the building.
Thanks, Councilmember Fagin. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think this is maybe another example of us sort of all. Arguing around something we kind of agree on in, in major concerts. We all enjoy the history of Louisville. We all appreciate the museum. We all would love this building to get built. And so I think it's important that, you know, we don't. Appear to be on opposite sides of, of that part of it. May, I, I'm not meaning to speak for all of you, but you have all spoken and, and that's what I've heard is that. There's a lot of support for the building being built. It just, can the money be raised and is it reasonable and should we be spending money on the question? Bridget, I, I so much appreciate you and everything you've done at the museum, especially for my own home, the old Louisville Hospital and the history. That you looked into and the stories that you came up with, and you do amazing job there. And, and we really appreciate you. You know, I think my two main, I think the main thing is. We've been, we've been talking about this, but can you fundraise for an amount? If you don't know the amount, unless you go one step further, and I think it's possible that, you know. I, I, I can see where the comment's like, well, it'll be, I don't know, maybe 6 million or 8 million. So we're gonna try to raise, you know, 6 to 8 million, and then we get down to the, the end of it. And Councilmember Lipton, you won't be on council anymore for sure, but I can imagine you saying like, oh. Well, it's a lot more. Why didn't you get schematics before you went and had an estimate here? We needed a better estimate. We needed a better estimate. So I do think there's, obviously, if we're, if, if, if the intention is to raise money in one way or another for this. It seems, it seems to me necessary that we need better cost estimates. But that's. You know, that, that seems to be the general consensus, is that we would need better, better cost estimates. And I, and I think I get that. My two big financial pieces, I don't want to waste $200,000 on something that's never going to get built. But I think, I'm trying to remember what the budget was for moving those two miners cabins from the baseball field to a storage facility. But I think it's a quarter million. So we spent. Hundreds of thousands of dollars to move two buildings to a parking lot. I'd be willing to spend $200,000 to see if we can, you know, give them the information they need to go out and really fundraise for this. And then the second piece is, you know, if you look at the budget we were just looking at earlier. The historic preservation funds, you know, expected balance at the end of 2022 is 2.8 million. Sorry, 3 million, is 3 million. And so, you know, could we direct staff to engage the Historic Preservation Commission? To spend $200,000 of HPC money to get this schematic drawn when they have a $3 million budget right now? And it's certainly within their wheelhouse as a historic preservation element, and otherwise we can't really touch that money, is my understanding. So, you know, I would support. That concept of, of trying to use HPC funds to get schematic drawings in order to get a better cost estimate. In order to understand what the fundraising possibilities could be to hopefully get momentum behind building this. Understanding that two years from now, we may all just be like, maybe we just can't get enough money to do it. And that, that, that would be, that would suck. That would suck to spend $200,000 for something that didn't happen. But I, I think it's worth that risk and that investment, similar to what we did with the miners cabins. I'm glad we spent that money to preserve them, and hopefully we'll someday find a way to use them, and, and, and we'll get that finished.
So Director Zakaro, could you just clarify, like approximately what the miners cabins cost and what we got for that funding?
Sure, yeah. So that project's still in process, so it was a little over 200,000. And that was the cost to move them to city shops, but also then move them back and restore them. And, you know, put them on a foundation and do restoration at Miners Field. So that, it wasn't 200 just to move them to the shops, it's 200 to move them back and forth and restore them at Miners Field. It was a little over 200. I don't know the exact number, about 215,000.
Thanks for the clarification on that. And I just, in listening to the conversation, I feel like we all have different background information, and I find that frustrating. There's a lot of information in the packet, and I get that. But my perception of where we are is we have a cost estimate. And just like with the underpasses, it's not the final design. There's a certain percent design. This is concept design. And so when you're at this phase and you're estimating costs, there's more uncertainty, so you have to add a larger contingency. And if we do this next phase of schematic design, we still won't know the exact cost. We still will have to have a large contingency. And so we have an order of magnitude cost in front of us. And so what I want to know is where you all think we'll find 6 to 10 million dollars? And if the foundation could fundraise that much. That's what I truly don't understand. And so this additional information that you're all feeling like you're going to get this additional information from this next level of design. I'm failing to see what additional information we're getting, like, we have an order of magnitude. It's not a precise amount. And it won't be a precise amount until we do a bid, frankly. Like, even if we get 30% design, we'll still have to have 40% contingency. So I'm just confused. I'm genuinely confused by the comments. But I'm, I'm not saying that in any kind of negative way. I just am coming from a very different place and don't understand. Councilmember Fagin?
Yes, I'm, I'm just listening to everyone saying how they're, they're questioning. Whether or not this money would be spent and the building never rate and built. My feeling is that the need for this new building is just going to keep increasing over time. And the cost of building it will increase over time. So we can build it now. We could build it with all city money. We could go bond for it. We could put it on the ballot, just like we did for the underpasses, like we did for the rec center, like we did for the library construction. Let's support our city facility of a museum the way we've supported other city facilities. The cost estimate that we got from the conceptual design is so out of date. It's, it, it can't even guide us anymore. We need to have the conceptual design in order to know exactly what it's going to be. Find out what the foundation can give us, because they can raise some. I don't know how much. And just move forward with it. It's never going to cost less than it does today.
Thanks, Councilmember Fagin. Councilmember Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. The, I know that both Bridget and potentially Director Nemecheck mentioned that. You know, it's hard to raise money for a city-owned museum without city support. And I'm, I'm struggling with that a little bit, because it seems like we have supported the museum. We, we've, we've increased our, we've increased our FTE. We've, we've put money, we have, yes, there've been a lot of donations. I can see Deb shaking her head at me. But I, I'm, I'm struggling. So what, I guess my question is like. What is the, what is the level of city commitment that would allow the foundation to, to raise money? Because I think there's some of us, some of us in council who are worried about, like, what is the path forward? You know, can, can the foundation demonstrate that there is an ability to raise money? And help us, you know, get to where we want to be? And then the, the other side of it is the foundation and maybe staff as well, telling us, well, we can't raise money until you guys commit to us. And we're saying, well, we are committed to you. So get, get, you know, give, give me a little, give me a little more background on sort of what's, what's needed here. And in terms of a commitment from, from, from council.
Yeah, so I think if I can, I, I think maybe it was misstated, the idea of city not supporting the museum in general. I think what the foundation is, is saying is that to raise funds for this specific project. For a city-owned facility to go out and start asking for those large donations. For a project that the city hasn't committed to, it's a hard ask. If you're looking for, I think Jen mentioned there was a $2 million angel donor in Longmont. And to get someone to donate those kinds of funds when the city hasn't committed to actually building the building as well. So I think maybe, and Jen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there was an MOU in Longmont between the city and the foundation or the Friends Group. That kind of committed them both to the project. So there was fundraising that was done because they could say that the city has committed to this project. So I think we all appreciate completely council support of the museum and everything the museum does and the operating budget. And as the mayor said, 10 times increase over the years. It's incredible, but I think what the foundation is saying is that some sort of agreement on this project. That if funds are raised or there's a percentage that the city, I think as Bridget mentioned. The city would fund a percentage and the foundation would fund a percentage. So it's, it's really a commitment to this specific project, I think they were looking for.
Okay, that, I mean, that's, that, I appreciate that. That's helpful. I think, and I, and I, I get the idea that there would be a reticence potentially from donors. To give to us, to a government-owned facility, potentially. I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is. Is this $200,000, $200,000 the commitment that is needed to raise that money? I'm not convinced, right? Like, if the commitment is really that we need to, as a council, commit like, you know, 50% of the overall funding. Like, if the foundation can mat, can raise five, and we, then we'll commit five. Right? If that's the commitment that is needed, then I don't think that's what they're gonna, you're gonna get tonight. I'm not, I'm not, so, I'm still not really convinced that the schematics and this particular. This particular commitment to the project is, would be enough if I were an angel donor or whatever else. But maybe, but convince me that I'm wrong.
No, I think really the schematics, and again, this was direction from council, that the schematics would just give us better cost estimation. So I think, you know, we need to decide if, if we believe that to be true or not. This isn't an area of expertise for me. But I think that was the direction from council, that we just needed better estimation.
We just wanted the cost estimate, okay? And I, and I think that, okay, so it isn't, so the, so the arguments that have been made about the schematics being. The thing that will allow us to go out and raise money, that's not so much. It's really just a matter of like, we need to know what, you, you know, the position of staff and the position of the foundation is. We just really need to know what the cost estimate is now, as opposed to four years ago.
And our understanding was that schematic design would give us that.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, real quick, yes, I just, I think that that's probably what is, is, we're struggling with right now is that. There's feels like there was council direction to go get schematics for better cost estimates, estimate, estimation. They're asking for that. They asked for it. We said yes, then it got canceled during COVID. So like, okay, we're back. To just do that thing you want us to do. And we're like, why are you doing that? We don't need you to do that. Like, cool, we won't do that. So I mean, maybe if the direction is, we don't need that, but go ahead with the fundraising, go ahead with the project. Just inflate the number a couple million and, and do your best to try to figure out how to get the next step. I mean, it kind of sounds, I mean, Mayor, you said, I'd be interested in building this thing if the money was raised. That's not the issue. So if it's just a matter of kind of saying, listen, we actually don't need that. We don't need a more accurate, more current cost estimate. We can, we can make a educated guess here, and let's move forward with, with the approach and with the effort and with the fundraising. And see what, what starts happening. You know, I can, I can support that, you know, if it, if it isn't a, we don't want to give you this $200,000. Because we have no interest in this museum being built. And that's not where I'm landing, so if I can get clarification there, I, I'm okay saying no to the 200,000. If it doesn't mean an absolute no to the museum ever being built.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Lipton?
I think I need a break.
Okay.
Provide my comments.
It's 8:26, so we'll take a 10-minute break, and I'll see everybody back here at 8:36. It's eight twenty-six, so we'll take a 10-minute break and I'll see everybody back here at eight thirty-six.
Councilman Relipton, I must say that you look quite refreshed.
All right. Is everybody ready to go again? All right, welcome back. Um, we are still on item three D of our agenda, museum expansion design funding. We are on council discussion and, uh, questions and comments. And councilmember Lipton, you are up.
Thank you, mayor. Um, yeah, that was a request for a strategic break as much as anything else. I just think it was probably good to lower the temperature a little bit. I, yeah, it's been a intriguing conversation. And I'm trying to remember some of the timeline and how we got to where we are and what our thinking was. You know, I, my, my recollection, I, I was, uh, in favor of getting better cost estimates. Because we had just come over off the Rex Center project. We had come off a number of important capital projects and everything. Anytime we estimated anything, we were grossly wrong. And I didn't want to see us go down some path where we think, okay, it's $3 million, but it turns out to be $8 million. And then, you know, uh, city ends up being the, uh, you know, the, the financing of last resort and we gotta plug the number, you know, to make it work. I didn't want to see us get to that with this. If we ever decided to go forward with this. So, you know, I think we suggested we need to do some more work on design, get better cost estimates. You know, and I think we'll be better for that. Um, I'm not sure we need to do a full schematic design to accomplish that. I mean, the, the concept design gave us the pretty pictures that the foundation said they needed to use for fundraising and for us to engage our citizen, citizens. Uh, the conceptual design arguably did not have enough of a contingency in it. And I, and this is what happened with the Rex Center. Rex Center went over the budget because we did a conceptual design, but we had a very minimal contingency. And then we started to find things that weren't included in that design. That if we had known, we would have included and the price would have been higher. Um, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm not going to be the council member that ki- kills the museum expansion. Um, you know, this is going to, um, go after me and it's going to go on after me. And I don't think it's fair for me to, you know, if I'm a deciding vote on this, I'm not going to do that tonight. Uh, I would suggest you look for some middle ground and I think there is middle ground. I think you could, uh, if, have someone refresh the conceptual design estimates. Put on a contingency, you know, reflecting kind of the contingency that you've used on the underpass projects, maybe a little bit more, give you a br- a broad range of magnitude estimate of what this might turn out to be. Um, I think that I'm kind of intrigued by, um, option three C. Oh, now I'm gonna back up. Terms of timeline, although I was supportive of doing the, the schematic design for better process, maybe. I was also very much, uh, in favor of doing some, um, adding some questions to the citizen survey. To find out what kind of citizen support there would be for museum expansion. And to perhaps a tax or, you know, whatever. And, you know, and that happened, we got the results back after March. In 2020. So we, you know, we got the results back, I think, in around June. And they were very concerning for this project. I mean, I had absolutely not anticipated the, um, I won't say lack of support, perhaps lack of knowledge and, 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 uh, resulting, uh, results that we got in the citizen survey surrounding this. And I think, I think that is an important factor in how you proceed with this. And I think that you don't want to go down a path that's going to start spending a lot of money and getting expectations raised. And getting people to commit a lot of emotional and financial energy behind this unless really the citizens want. And I think that I'm intrigued by the, the fact that we really don't have that yet. And maybe that could happen, um, or maybe it won't. So my, my suggestion to you tonight is not to, you know, make a final decision on whether we're ever going to have a museum expansion. But make a decision to, um, spend some effort, maybe some resources to, you know, better uh, understand the sentiments of the residents and have the residents better understand this project and what the alternatives are for financing. And it could be, you know, something like issuing bonds, although the amount is really too small, I think, for a bond. It could be asking them, asking the public perhaps to, um, uh, provide more flexibility in the historic preservation tax. It could be a, a number of things that, you know, we're not really talking about tonight because we really haven't gotten that far in the, into the process. And I, so I would suggest you buy some time. And I know that's gonna disappoint half of you and it's going to disappoint the other half of you that this, this thing could linger. But, um, I, I think it's probably worth looking at, I, uh, option three C for now. And kick it, kick the schematic design in the future. It doesn't even have to be in 2022. It could be in 2023. You can always move it around, but spend a little bit, invest a little bit on public engagement over the next year. I think, you know, 50,000 is probably excessive, but you know, you can come up with whatever the proper number is and split it with the foundation. And if for some reason it turns out to be significant citizen support, then, you know, you can consider moving forward with the next uh, phase of design and investing more money and, you know, perhaps even considering a ballot issue of some kind. So that's kind of where I am on this. And, you know, I, like I said, I, I, I think the next council really needs to deal with this. And I'm fine with that. Uh, but my recommendation to you tonight is to, yeah, do, do a little bit more work on this before you make a final decision. One way or the other. Thanks.
Thanks, councilmembers. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Councilmember Lang.
Um, I, I have sort of mixed, mixed views, but I, I don't sense a, you know, I, I guess I sent some, some reticence to move forward with a bigger, um, a, a bigger commitment tonight. I, I think there is value in public engagement on this. And I am kind of intrigued by councilmember Lipton's suggestion because that was part of Leah's ask, I think, the $200,000 ask was to do some engagement and maybe, maybe what that gets you, if, if the number, I don't know what the number would be. I mean, it was to take, I don't know, it was a 20, 25 to 35,000. Um, or maybe more. I don't, I don't know. I guess we can get some sense of that, but maybe that would be a good way to flesh out the numbers. I mean, we know from other kinds of bond issues, we don't have anything like that on the underpasses right now. We don't, we haven't done any polling on it. Um, but we have this information about the 53%. It's something, but, but I gotta tell you, I don't think anybody, it, it's not as much as what you'd really like going into a decision on a bond issue. Um, that's, uh, there's different interests that play in the, in the underpass. There's a lot more historical support. I think it, that, you know, you'd love it to be up above 60 or 65. Um, because you know, a third of the people are gonna always vote against every tax measure. And it's, it's hard to know. I think it does give you some, you know, it does give uh, the foundation some momentum to, to try to end some funds, to be able to create a buzz that, that maybe doesn't exist right now. I think that, you know, from my standpoint, you know, it may convince council members who are reticent right now to look at it a little differently next year when there's a little more information in front of them. Um, so, you know, that may be worth, worth doing. So I, I suppose I, I'm not, that wouldn't be my optimal solution, but I think that given where I perceive we are, that may be a, uh, a decent place to land for right now.
Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you. Yes. Um, I guess, uh, I'm, I'm listening to the residents right now and saying that the majority, and I know it's a small majority, but it is a majority, want this new building. 53% want the new building. That's just the ones that are speaking. Every person that has sent us a letter or an email or called in this evening for the call has been in favor of building this building. At least of doing the schematic designs. This is something that was decided by council before, for reasons that councilman Lipton iterated. It has been approved. What we're talking about tonight is taking away something that we have already approved. And I just can't see us doing this. We, we need in doing any kind of building to do our due diligence. We need to get the schematic design. We need to do the public outreach. But we don't just give it away because maybe it won't go through. Well, maybe a lot of things won't happen, but maybe a lot of things will happen. And I think this is important to follow through on and do what we said we were gonna do.
Thanks, councilmember Fahy. So I, I'm, um, I appreciate councilmember Lipton's suggestion that we continue. You know, obviously there's not complete agreement. So, you know, the suggestion to continue to talk about it makes sense from a lot of perspectives. There are really truly trade-offs in life and that sure stinks. It, it's really easy to say yes to everything. And that must be a fun position to be in. But in reality, um, this is competing against other projects and it's not about $200,000. And it, I totally disagree that we're taking something away. Like this is a question about whether or not to add this into the budget. Like it's not there right now. And so to me, it's like, does this provide some piece of information that we don't already have access to today? And, and the answer is no. We, we know the order of magnitude of funding. So if council is ready to commit on the order of $5 million, I want to know what you are proposing we cut. Um, because it would be a lot more fun to be in the position of supporting the things that you cut than it is to be in the position to cut something. It's, it's absolutely terrible from a practical standpoint to have to tell someone no. Like, it's terrible. I would love to be able to do everything for everyone. And this group is here tonight and interested in this topic. Um, I got half a dozen emails last month about pickleball. People want pickleball. They're dying for pickleball. They would love to have pickleball. Where are our pickleball courts? Before that, the tennis courts need to be resurfaced. Um, you know, we want to have more, um, statues. We want statues on the Caslin and we want statues on Main Street and we want more statues in community park. And we want, um, more programming at the library and more hours at the library and more hours at the rec center and we want more services from the police officers. And we want them monitoring the speed limit everywhere and we want them doing this and that. And we want them walking down the street and shaking hands and kissing babies. And we want more of a lot of things and I get it. And all of those things are really cool and they really do compete against each other. And like, at, at some level, like, yeah, it stinks to have to say like, And like, at, at some level, like, yeah, it stinks to have to say, like, I don't know where we would get five million dollars for this. But that's the decision I'm looking at right now. I mean, I hear you guys saying like, just take this one more step, take this one more step. Let's have the conversation about what this step is leading to. Like, let's look ahead, look up. How do we fund that? What do we cut to do that? And I don't skip forward. So I'm, I would be interested in public engagement around that step. Because I don't think that we need to just spend money that has no end game. That seems wasteful to me. And I'm ver- I'm very interested in programming more things at the museum and having discussions about, you know, how we can enrich it and engage. Um, I'm very interested in doing an MOU with the foundation on building the building. But what I know about our funding and what we could commit to is not five million dollars. And so, um, I'm just struggling. And so I would be interested in hearing what things you, you all are proposing we cut to do this. Because it just doesn't, I don't understand the math that you're doing in your heads to be able to support, um, this tonight. And so maybe I'm thinking about the problem very differently than you are, but I just don't understand it. Councilmember Lay.
Mayor, I, I appreciate this has been a very good discussion so far. I, 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 I understand the frustration. I think the, I, part of, part of the challenge is we're dealing with a hundred and sixty-five thousand. But are we dealing with that or are we dealing with five million? And I didn't come in tonight. And I think a lot of people didn't come in tonight with the idea that we were at a five million dollars on, to decide about. And I, I, that, that's a. Challenging, right? Um, I don't know how many, maybe other people came with that. I do think. That it is worth. I, I think it's worth the, some funds to do the public engagement to. To, to tease out. What people might be willing to do. Uh, and would be willing to do and to see if there is more enthusiasm. Next year for. Because I think the focus is not there. I think we've got some information from the citizen survey. I think this is really important. I mean, that's why I say, I mean, I'd like this hundred sixty-five thousand, but I do understand the, the reticence. And I don't think we're, I think nobody hearing this is saying that. They expect five million dollars from the city as a result of this discussion. I just don't, I don't think anybody would walk away from that as a reasonable conclusion, right? Uh, but I do think it is worth that wager. That public engagement amount to see if. There is a way, there are options that can, that can. Generate. What, what they really need to do to, to build this thing and what we might be willing to do if indeed people were focused on. Specifics and on what we have. I think I'd like to have, I'd like to have a refresh. At the very least, a refresh of the numbers that we had from before, which aren't any good now. So, uh, you know, I don't know what that costs. I mean, I, council member. Councilmember Lipton just said, uh, three C. I, I'd like to put the bigger issue off for another day. I, I don't think, I think what, what I'm hearing, Mayor, is what you're saying is now is time to pull the plug on this and say. Unless you guys come up with six million dollars or whatever, you know. We're, we're kind of at a place where we're not going to put any more money. And it is that, I, I don't want to mischaracterize, but I mean, that's kind of. The hard news that I hear from you suggesting here. And I, I think it's worth doing a step before that. That's all.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahy. Uh, Councilmember, just to clarify, I guess I'm not saying pull the plug, but I think if a commitment of spending more money on this, in my opinion, is not. It doesn't make sense unless there's a larger commitment. And so I don't understand how, how that larger commitment's being making. So I guess I would frame my position slightly differently. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you. Yes, I'm, I guess I'm, uh, kind of resigned right now. So I would be willing to go along with Counselor Lipton's suggestion that we go with option C.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, 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 as Counselor Dickinson said, you know, I think this is kind of a good discussion. I have respect for everybody's thoughts and opinions. And so, um, you know, we're coming from different perspectives. And as I've said before, there's a reason why there's seven of us, right? So that we can sort of fair all, all the perspectives around this. Um, in the previous discussion, we were talking about budget and I was talking about, you know, transformative investments. And, you know, I listed things like the underpasses, which, uh, if you look at the citizen survey, it was very, very high. It was transportation things. But I talk about open space, trail maintenance, the infrastructure and parks and medians. Streetscapes and the tree maintenance program. And, you know, uh, an item that's not very interesting, but necessary to talk about. A city office space because we have, you know, more employees and we need to figure that out as well. You know, and, and when I go back and look at the citizen survey, um, you know, in the presentation, I mean. The information, you know, the top three funding, you get economic prosperity, open space, environmental sustainability, utilities, transportation. Public safety, recreation, parks, um, libraries, and then you get the museum. I can't make this decision and divorce my thinking from what the long-term investment would need to be. And so, um, I, when I look at this, it's, it's making a commitment to a certain direction. So I don't have any problem with looking at three C. If we do it in total context with everything else and all the other things. That are priorities in the city. Because I believe if you just ask about one item, the answer will be yes. But if you, if you start asking about, should we spend more money on parks? Should we spend more money on open space? Should we continue spending money on transportation? Um, you know, recreation fields, all those kind of things. Those all have to be in context with city priorities. And so I'm okay taking a three C approach. As long as we do it in a holistic way that gives us a view of what the priorities are by the citizens. But, and I'm fine doing that. So I can support that. Um, but I do believe it's going to come out very similar to the two thousand sixteen. And two, in, um, twenty twenty citizen survey where we've already asked those questions. So that's my opinion. I'm okay to go with three C. It's long-studded in entire context with all of our other city services. And our priorities. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Protem Maloney. Councilmember Lipton.
Yeah, I think, uh. Protem Maloney summed it up pretty well. Um, and I never intended that by looking at three C, we would exclude. Looking at things more holistically and trying to determine, you know, better determine what priorities are. And, and to also answer the question, okay, what would we be giving up if we decided to do this? So I, I think three C can be scoped and, and, uh. Structured in a way that's really going to do all of that for you. I would suggest that included in three C, and I think included in the fifty thousand dollars should be, uh. Refreshing the cost numbers, the conceptual plan. I don't think that would be that difficult. You can go back to the original. You know, architectural firm, tell them the scope program hasn't changed. We just want to update the numbers. I don't, I don't think that's a big effort and that should. That should be included in the fifty thousand if you're going to spend another fifty thousand. And I, I'd also suggest that the, the foundation commits to splitting whatever that number is, uh, fifty thousand or whatever. So that everybody has skin in the game. We're not going at this alone. And, and, you know, finding out later that we don't, we don't have that other commitment. So I think it would be required that the city and the foundation split the cost for whatever that scope turns, and the amount that it turns out to be. Thanks.
All right. Um, it sounds like there's general consensus to move on, uh, option C. Um, and include, uh, the, the, in the con- in the context, greater context of city services. Uh, and the other comments that Councilmember Lipton just added. I, I guess I'll just. It's, it seems like there's a majority support for going in that direction, I guess. I, I, I really do appreciate the discussion. I do think that these hard discussions we have do make us better. Um, they're very hard to have and sometimes frustrating and particularly frustrating over Zoom. Um, I would rather spend fifty thousand dollars and, um, build. Build membership, build engagement. Like I would rather send the historian to every house in Louisville, um, once a year. And like have more, like have a program. Like I, I would like to see membership increase and like. That would change the outcomes of these city surveys going forward. Like that would change, change community perception and benefit. And, um, so I would rather spend fifty thousand dollars on something that enhances the, uh, museum experience. Or helps us to share the information about the museum with the community, uh, rather than continue to ask the same question, uh, over and over again. So I would rather spend the money on that. Um, I would rather not do option three C, but I do believe it's the consensus of the group. Any other discussion on this topic?
Could I ask, Mayor, what, what exactly were we voting on? Any, is there a motion or?
We can make a motion. It's really always best if council acts by motion to give direction. But, um, I think that the staff framed our choices pretty discreetly. And so I was just counting votes as we went. And I think there's majority support for moving forward with option D pretty well, exactly as it's written by staff. But just with the, um, adjustments that Mayor Protem Maloney added about doing it in the context of other priorities.
Could I, could I also ask that the concept plan cost estimates be refreshed as part of this scope?
Yeah, I, I didn't see anybody not head nodding when you were saying, I mean, people were generally kind of showing agreement when you were saying that.
And then, and this would be added, like, or substituted in the CIP, in the bu- in the CIP budget. For that line item. I assume that's really what we're doing here.
Yeah, the way it's listed out, um, we can, we can give that direction if that's your intention. The way it's listed out here is that it would be a twenty-five thousand commitment from the council. Twenty-five thousand commitment from the foundation and that it would move the discussion about the hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to twenty twenty-three. That's the way the staff outlined it. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you. Yes, I'm, um. Just going to make a comment. I think that the city should pay the full fifty thousand, considering the fact that the foundation just finished spending fifty thousand. Redoing the pop-up park and the base of the, the existing foundation at the museum. So they have shown their commitment to the museum.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahy. Any discussion around paying it all ourselves? I just want to say I never had any question about the foundation's unwavering support for the museum and, and their efforts. And, um, so the question is just, I heard other people say skin in the game on this expansion project. Looks like City Manager Davis has a comment and then I don't know if folks want to weigh in on Councilmember Fahy's suggestion.
I, I just, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to just, you know, clarify, we'll all work with Director Watson. But it's, it's possible that this would not actually be a capital project if we're doing this type of engagement. So just to clarify, it may end up being actually a, you know, operational expenditure, but we'll, we'll find the right place for it. We would, um, obviously account for any match associated from the foundation, depending on what you decide and, and move forward in that direction.
Thanks, City Manager Davis. Folks have, um, reactions to Councilmember Fahy or other questions or comments? Councilmember Dickinson.
Um, I never heard anybody, uh, give any feedback on the concept of using HPC money. Is that, I guess, staff, is that something we have an option to do?
Just in the, in, in the greater context, I don't know when you answer this question, if you want to weigh in on, you know, how much we're spending toward that twenty percent that we're allowed to be spending.
Yeah, so I think we. Uh, I think we moved some of the museum's expenses that are now coming out of that. And Rob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, out of that HPC funding. I think we are currently using that full twenty percent. Am I right?
Right. So I think there, there's the issue of the twenty percent that goes to operations of the museum. And then there's the three, you know, the, the balance that we have, which is for grants and other preservation projects. So there's been a lot of discussion about whether you can use that money for a concept plan. Um, that's certainly not consistent with. How we've used the funds in the past. It's really, you know, when we work with a, a property owner, we require. Um, you know, reimbursement for actual construction, um, of improvements. So I'd have to research a bit more to see if concept planning is actually consistent with the ballot language. And the funding resolutions. So I could research that more, but it's, my first thought is it, it may not be eligible.
Got it.
And just to clarify for folks at home, the twenty percent that we're talking about, um, the, originally the historic preservation tax was just for perfect. Preservation of historic structures to save buildings that might otherwise be demolished. And the, the voters were asked for permission to allow, uh, twenty percent of museum operations to be funded with that tax. And we're now maximizing that twenty by twenty percent.
So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. That's not an option, but, um, otherwise I'm looking forward to a motion.
Councilmember Lay.
You're muted.
You just asked the question about, uh, Councilmember Fahy's proposal. I. I, I am a fan of having, uh, the foundation have some skin in this game, I think. Uh, I, I think the, but I also recognize that, uh. You know, we, we want them to be focusing at least some of their resources on fundraising. But what, what I would say is that we split it, uh, but not fifty fifty, that we split it twenty-five seventy-five. Um, that we, we take care of seventy-five percent of the, of the cost and that we have the foundation. Take care of twenty, twenty-five percent. And I guess I would add that to the request or I would suggest adding that to the direction.
Uh, how do folks feel about that? I don't know if everybody needs to weigh in or if folks can just generally nod. Uh, I think there needs to be some more discussion. I see, um, variety of opinions. So you all need to raise your hands and weigh in. Councilmember Brown.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. I've gotten confused. Where, where are we on the, what are we nodding our heads to?
So I think there's general consensus to move forward with option C and we're just getting into the details of that. So it's about, it's about spending fifty thousand dollars for public engagement around this, um, topic. But in the greater context of city priorities, um, and so. And to, uh, refresh the numbers so that they're just brought forward from the twenty seventeen numbers to twenty twenty-one numbers. Um, and build some contingency. And we've been using forty-five percent contingency for things like the underpasses. Um, and so the question, so I think there's consensus on all those points. The point that we're on now is how it should be funded. So the proposal in the staff packet was fifty fifty split between foundation and city. Councilmember Fahy made a proposal that we would just pay for it. And Councilmember Lay counter, counter offered that it would be good to have. Um, you know, some sign of commitment from the foundation that this is an interesting thing to study. Otherwise, why are we studying it? And so his counterproposal was twenty-five percent of the funding of the fifty K would be from the foundation and seventy-five percent would be from the city.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. I can go either way on that. I mean, I think, I think having some commitment from the foundation is fine. I think I'm comfortable with the staff proposal, but that's not the sort I'm going to follow.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
I can support the staff proposal of fifty fifty. Thank you.
Other folks?
I can literally support all three. So just loving, uh, a motion and all the.
I'll make a motion. We'll just get done with this. Um, that we, um, the mayor outlined it very well just now. Through the three C plus, uh, refreshing the numbers. And that the cost of fifty thousand dollars to do public engagement. to do public engagement and refresh the, the amounts that had been estimated before would be borne seventy five percent by the city and twenty five percent by the foundation.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mayor Proton Maloney, I just want to find out if that's a new hand or is residual hand. Got it. Any discussion of the motion?
We're an old hand.
All right. Is everyone clear what we're voting on? All right. Did he clerk me? Could we please have a roll call on the motion?
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
No.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries and I'll just turn to the city manager and find out if there's any other direction you need on this topic.
No, this is a clear direction and, um, we appreciate it. Director Nemechek, do you have any questions?
I don't. I think the direction's clear. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thanks, everybody. And so we are adjourned for this evening. See you next week.